Good morning and welcome to the Jefferson County Commission meeting. Today is February 1st, 2024. It's 9:30 a.m. We'd like to start off by prayer by Pastor Danny Ortiz.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We often open in prayer, but go ahead and pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning. Thank you for the day. Thank you for your free country. Thank you for governing officials. Thank you for all that they do with this capacity from Jefferson County all the way up to the federal government. Thank you for the opportunity to vote, play roles in our local government, prepare for this meeting. I'm here this morning that you were blessed. Pray that all that is said and done would be honoring Lord, mine to you. Pray that you would give us wisdom. Lord, his decisions are made, conversations are had. And pray that you would just guide and direct to you see fit. Thank you, Lord, once again for your many blessings here in America for another day of life. Give you all honor and glory and praise for it. Pray all this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you.
If you could, everything same for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, free and just as for all.
Approval of the minutes, January 18th, 2024.
I just have a question. Let me make sure I got the right. So on item number 12 under new business, it says table the discussion on the agenda policy. But I thought we had decided that it would be added to this agenda for review. I thought that was the general consensus. And I didn't see it on.
I thought that, I think you're correct about that. I will say that I did not submit any agenda request. I'm still working on mine, but I don't recall tabling that.
Okay.
I just thought we were gonna.
Well, and I think what I wanted was the, you know, I said a better red line version. So I could tell what was cut out and what was put in.
Okay, maybe we can talk after so that you can tell me more what you're looking for. Because I thought that what I did was proper. But if you're looking for something different, I'm happy to hear about that. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any, I don't know that was officially, we didn't vote to table it, I don't think. But we just, there was a motion made and the motion was withdrawn, withdrawn. So maybe it was just interpreted as being tabled, I think. All right. All right, any other objections? All right, if none, hearing none, the minutes are approved with those, that one change. Approval accounts payable for January 25th, 2024, an amount of $563,000. I'm, I'm supposed to remind everybody talking to this microphone. So you can hear. An amount of $563,457.91, if there are no objections, that is approved. For accounts payable for February 1st, 2024, an amount of $538,907.89, if there are no objections, that's approved. For manual checks for January 26th, 2024, an amount of $81,351.42, if there are no objections, that's approved. For February 2nd, 2024, an amount of $369,800.96, if there are no objections, that's approved. For approval of requisitions for February 1st, 2024, an amount of $92,789.76, if there are no objections, that is approved. And for approval payroll for January 19th, 2024, an amount of $333,447.37, if there are no objections, that's approved. Are there any announcements?
I had just the one I was just going to say about that. I will be bringing the agenda policy revisions to the next week. I have not had the opportunity to complete those and I did want to talk to you.
Yeah, well, well, I, now that I'm thinking about more, I was talking about more the process of the, any, yes ma'am.
Yep, yes ma'am. Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, we'll move into public comment. If you sign up for public comment, you will have three minutes to speak. Have you said your name, your address? And they have asked me to have you speak directly into the microphone and pull it up to your face. We'll start off with, first with Jackie Miller.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, you can flip it.
Is that better? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, can you start now? Adjustment period. Good morning and thank you for public comment. If this commission has not done so as of today, please provide the public with the document sent to the West Virginia Ethics Commission requesting an opinion on whether a set of subcommittees is subject to Open Meetings Act. To my knowledge, as evidence in the record, this topic has been executed in public domain and has yet to meet the government requirements of executive session. I have provided you with a letter from the contractor hired by this government body in April of '22. The letter is dated October 5th, 2023, and I hope that it accompanied, I hope that it accompanied the submittal to the Ethics Commission. Note, the letter reads in part, quote, "As we discussed in committee meetings, there seems to be a problem with the currently applied waiver process for the planning commission," end quote. Cross referencing the approved meeting minutes from October 10th, Planning Commission meeting, I quote, "Mr. Stollifer made a motion that the Planning Commission should process all waivers in accordance with the current version of the subdivision regulations. Mr. not seconded motion and carried unanimously." Later in the same minutes, the President Report states, I quote, "Mr. Shep noted that the Planning Commission ordinance rewrite committee had determined to put the rewrite on hold until the after the comprehensive plan is approved so that the amendments can reflect recommendations from the plan." In February of 2020, according to meeting minutes, Mr. Stollifer suggested creating a subcommittee to work with the consultants to work on a drafting, a text amendment to allow solar facilities to process as an essential utility and not as a conditional use, and to create provisions to address some of the planning commission's concern, including fencing, screening, and decommissioning. Mr. Jonathan Saunders, Saunders at County Engineer brought up concerns about creating impervious areas and stormwater runoff that stated exempting such projects from processing complying with stormwater management could create future problems with erosion. Mr. Stollifer nominated Mr. Wade Louthen. Mr. Shep nominated Mr. Ron Thomas and volunteered to service well, and they worked with the consultant and staff on the text amendment. It appears that substantial deliberations do take place at these committee meetings. And a sub unit of the Planning Commission that does not meet CORM is actually a regular Planning Commission meeting or a special Planning Commission meeting. So I hope that the evidence was put into the record to the Ethics Commission, proper evidence. I would like that document to be sent to me. I have requested that in an email this week. I have yet to have any response. That's it. I appreciate your time and hopefully we get that.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kristi Static.
Good morning. I'm Kristi Static. I'm a resident of Jefferson County. I live in Harper's Ferry on Wild Rose Lane. I'm here today to address something that Mr. Stollifer said at the January 18th County Commission meeting. He stated that he has never denied an agenda, an agenda item provided that the request was made before the agenda deadline. I'm here to present all five commissioners with a list of agenda items that I was able to compile on short notice. This was thrown together quickly. But if I, if I put the question out to the public, I believe I would find even more instances to prove this point. This list contains constituents and requested agenda items which were approved via email, but never appeared on the agenda they were approved for. What is also worth noting is that these same agenda requests were also not carried over to the next commission, county commission agenda as the current procedure states in Agenda Policy 900 on the county website. I've included appropriate documentation showing that the agenda items were in fact requested before the agenda deadline as well. This commission serves the public and as such, the public demands transparency, honesty, and integrity. We expect each county commissioner to tell the truth or we will keep holding you accountable. We cannot trust you if you cannot come here and start by being truthful. We also expect to be heard here and by your own Agenda Policy 900, which you aren't following. This means you cannot deny constituents or elected officials the right to have items on the agenda. We will be heard in this county, Mr. Stollifer. Additionally, I would like to specifically address Commissioner Majdi since he is new here and may not realize that there is a long and ugly history here of people's voices being silenced. People are angry in this county, Mr. Majdi. People no longer trust some of the commissioners on this panel. In the last county commission meeting, you agreed with Mr. Stollifer that no one has been denied the right to be on an agenda. You now sit with facts in front of you. Were you lied to? Were you lied to? Do you believe the people of this county? Can you help ensure that we have a fair shake at having our voices heard? Will you help us get on the agenda or will you still support Mr. Stollifer's lies? I'm sincerely asking and hoping you will serve. I'm finishing my comment.
You, you have three minutes, ma'am.
Let her finish her sentence.
The policy says I can finish my sentence. It's written right on the policy. Please don't laugh, that's extremely rude.
The policy says three minutes, ma'am.
No, I have the policy here, hold on.
Show some respect.
It says right there, I can finish my comment. Please read it to yourself if you're able to.
I'm sincerely asking and hoping you will serve the people in this matter and not Mr. Stollifer's self-serving agenda. Please, Mr. Majdi, please. We know the policies even though some people don't.
Thank you, Mrs. Static.
Next, we have David Tab.
David Tab, Jefferson County Lifelong, resident taxpayer. And if I remind everyone, when the computer system or the recording system is turned on, the county is only on listen mode. We're only here to listen. I heard it. It's recorded. What a shame. So also, we were blessed this morning. We need it. A lot of people need it.
We all do.
But there was a phrase that was used, "A free country." Not being objective or anything else, just repeating what was said. So I'll continue with my public comment. Attention, all property owner taxpayers. You only have a few days left to challenge your assessment. This country's not free. That will affect your tax bill. Of course, last year we had the largest increase of the assessment you've ever seen. Now the states got creative and increased the cost of square footage as if you have a brand new house and increased that as well. You're being taxed on as if you have a brand new house. My house is 180 years old. It should be tax exempt. As the county commission, why haven't you kept up your constituents about the assessments? Have y'all let anybody know about this? I let people know every year. Good luck with that. I still haven't seen the fire levy on the agenda to be placed on the ballot. Just remind the commission, even if the fire levy passes, this will take close to a year before the volunteer fire companies receive any revenue. The volunteer fire companies could really use the revenue now to continue their free firefighting services. They don't get paid. It's apparent the news media is not keeping up with the activities with Jefferson County Judicial Circuit Court. That there's a case that has been expanded to the Chief Justice Armstrong that the West Virginia Supreme Court. If this has drawn any attention to anyone's concern, case number CC-19-2023-C206. Take a look at it. Mr. Cochran is not the only one that has cases at the Circuit Court and the Supreme Court at the same time. Y'all do understand Jefferson County is a laughing joke in Charleston. Y'all have a nice day.
Mr. Tab, could you tell me that number again that you just said? Thank you, sir.
Yes. Y'all have a nice day. Appreciate that. Mr. Stollifer, appreciate the extra time. Thanks.
We next would move to gen item number one, Angie Banks.
Was there anybody online?
Oh, is there anyone? Go ahead.
Good morning. We have, we have two exonerations. This is on the 2023 personal property book in Harper's Ferry District. It's Fernandez, Ricardo, and Marian. Ticket number 307168.
I move to approve ticket number 307168.
Second.
Any objections? All in favor.
Wait a minute, what are the details of the exoneration?
It was reported as a, it was not reported as a reconstructed title. And so we valued it at the proper value rather than deducting from the value.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry. You have first and a second. Any discussion?
Discussion, go ahead. So just want to get on the record, since folks in the audience may not know, during public comment, the commission's not supposed to respond there because you want to avoid getting into a back and forth that would create a discussion. I didn't respond to direct questions that were posed to me for that reason. I'm not trying to ignore anybody or not pay attention to important legitimate concerns. I got a couple of direct questions and I'll follow up with my friend and neighbor directly after the meeting in private. I'm going to vote yes on this agenda item. And I just wanted to explain for the record why there wasn't any response.
I do believe she knows that. She's quite familiar with the policy. I think she's just trying to make a point.
Sure, sure. All right.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. We sort of got out of track there to approve the exoneration of 307168. We have a motion and a second, any more discussions on that, on that motion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries five zero.
Second exoneration is on the 2023 personal property book and Shepherdstown Corporation. It's for Honda Lease Trust and it's ticket number 317593. The vehicle was registered in Florida as of July 1/22, even though they have reported it. The assessed value, $22,215 and the tax amount, $592.96.
I'll move to approve ticket number 317593.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right, next we have Sheriff Tom Hand.
Morning, Mr..
Morning.
Morning. I have one item in front of you today. It's the rehire of a bailiff, already trained bailiff. In fact, you know him, he used to sit here for you every meeting. James Eddy, he resigned and I guess he decided he wanted to come back. And I need trained bailiffs as much as anybody else. Going to start Monday, pay of $17 an hour. He's a part-time, a part-time employee, so there's no benefits and it's within my budget.
Okay. I'll move to approve the hire of James Eddy as a part-time bailiff beginning February 5th, 2024 at the rate of $17 an hour.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you.
Next, we have a gen item number three, Nikki Painter.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. I apologize that that was not part of the agenda, but candidate filing went through Saturday. So that was beyond the deadline. First thing that I have on the agenda is the extended emergency absentee voting policy. And just to explain that for, especially for the new commissioners, this is something that is allowed in code. This is not something that developed per COVID, has nothing to do with COVID. This allows someone that has been confined within a hospital three days before the election to apply for an emergency absentee ballot. And that requires our office to accept that application. And then we have to send two staff members, opposite political party with the ballot to the hospital. The hospital or facility has to be within 35 miles of Charlestown. In the past, we have just extended it to hospitals. But you do have the opportunity in code to extend it to someone that is confined within their home. Previous commissions have decided not to extend it that way. And if you would, then I would come up with a different policy because I would want some type of protection for the employees going into someone's home. I wouldn't want to send two employees into someone's residence, especially in today's age with the attitudes towards elections and the suspicion. I just would not want to do that. So the policy that is before you is the policy that has been passed in previous years. It includes Jefferson Medical Center, Berkeley Medical Center, the VA, Winchester, and hospice. Frederick is just outside of the 35 mile boundary.
Okay. All right. See, anybody have any questions?
Well, I certainly agree with your concerns. I agree with your concerns about going into people's homes, not only for, you know, safety, but the health issues too, that we all have to be aware of. So, I mean, that's unfortunate, but it's where we are right now.
Anybody else?
I'd be interested in any ideas you might have for coming up with a protocol for that. I don't want to deny this suggested motion today. I'll vote for it, but I wonder, do we need to include in the motion a directive to staff to look into that further? Or can we just suggest it here and then? Maybe that's a question for the inner county administrator. Do I, should I include that in the motion? If I'd like to see the.
Question for the county Elections Department, county clerk.
Yeah.
That falls under the purview of the county clerk. So I think that would be, we could ask, certainly.
All right. In that case, I don't think we need to change the motion.
Yeah.
Got it.
All right. You want to move the motion?
You go ahead also.
Okay.
One more quick question, Ms. Painter. So this, just to clarify for myself and for other people, can people hear me? I just realized I'm not speaking into this and I don't have the loudest projection. So this, this is for a person who gets admitted to the hospital, wasn't planning on it, not a surgery or whatever. I mean, of course, it could apply to that, but, and they just want to be sure that they have their vote cast. They're worried they're not going to be out on time.
Correct. And this has to be, they would have had to have been admitted to the facility within three days prior to the election, which is past the cutoff for applying for a regular absentee. This would not apply to someone that has been in the hospital for two weeks before the election because at that point, they should have applied for a regular absentee application. Because obviously this is extraordinary circumstances. That's the reason to extend an emergency absentee policy.
Okay, okay. And, and there are of course lots of measures in place to be sure nobody has, this isn't their second time voting. Or if they do get out on time and they go to vote, you know, people are very cautious about nobody voting twice.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make that clear.
Yes.
I believe you. I just want to be sure other people hear that too.
Yes, we would check so that, that would have to come before us prior to noon on Election Day. So we would have access to if they have already requested an absentee ballot, if they have early voted. And if they go on Election Day, we would have that information prior to accepting that absentee ballot. Because that absentee ballot would not be counted with the regular absentee ballots. It would go before the commission as a canvassing board. So at that point, we would be able to see that they did not vote on Election Day.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you very much for that.
All right. Any other questions? All right, I'm moving motion to approve the extended emergency absentee voting policy as presented.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody, most carries five zero.
Well, thanks for doing this. This is a great thing.
Yeah. And Nikki, do you recall how many, how many used this policy at the last election or?
Zero. We have not had to use this policy in quite a number of years.
Okay.
Last time we had to do it was someone that was admitted into infectious disease and our employees actually had to go into full gear to walk into the room because our employees have to give the ballot, they have to sign an affidavit. There's an entire process in place.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. So the next item that I have on the agenda is approval of the early voting location. Currently, we have used for the last several elections, Charles Washington Hall. Charlestown is very gracious in allowing us to use that space. And they do not charge the county for using that space for 10. Actually, they have it blocked off for us for 12 days.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, we have never received a bill from them. We would like to use that space again. The county commission meeting room in the old library just is not sufficient space. And we've even come up with a plan and ordered additional supplies where we're going to have, we're going to try to have 28 voting stations set up in that room. So we've ordered, they're like partition walls that are movable that we're going to put down the middle because the middle was one big open space and have additional machines there that will allow for voter privacy. And we will have two, two check-in stations. So hopefully we will not have very much of a line.
Okay. I'll prove the early voting location of Charles Washington Hall.
A second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just want to compliment the county clerk and her team for expanding access to voting. It's a wonderful thing. Congrats and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, most carries five zero.
Okay, and the last item that I have is just basically election update and timeline. So I know there's a huge timeline that's put out for, on the Secretary of State's site, but there's a lot of other stuff that's in there that really doesn't pertain to you all that might not be of interest. So I just want to point out a couple of dates. The last day to fill any vacancies on the ballot is February 13th. Candidates can withdraw up until that date as well. Another one for drawing for the order on the ballot is at 9:00 a.m. on February 20th. Commission, it's open to the public. Commissioners are more than welcome to attend. March 29th is when we will begin to mail out absentee ballot. Ballots will go out of our office. April 23rd is the last day to register to vote. And another one that I want to point out is April 25th is going to be the public test of our voting equipment. I don't think people realize that we are required to test all of our voting equipment, including the tabulation machines. And we, as a county, we do not use a preset test deck. We actually create our own so that it is completely random. And we have to test it. And we have to test to make sure that the machines mark the ballots correctly, that the machine counts the ballots correctly. And then our tabulation equipment tabulates those at the final result at the end of the night. So that is open to the public. The commission is more than welcome to attend. It is held at our storage facility in Bardane. It's 128 Industrial Boulevard. And I would encourage you all to attend, any public that wants to attend. It kind of answers the question, you know, people are suspicious of voting equipment. It allows us to show you, there is a process behind the scenes that does make sure that our equipment is fully tested and fully functional before early voting and Election Day.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's a great idea. Much better than counting stubs on a string.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Had that experience.
Yeah. Early voting starts May 1st and it goes through May 11th. The two Saturdays that we are open, also nine to five for voting, are going to be May 4th and May 11th. And early voting does not close for lunch. They are open the entire time. And then obviously, May 14th is Election Day, big day. And then the 20th, May 20th is going to be canvas. And for the two new commissioners, you're in for a treat to go through. And for the two new commissioners, you're in for a treat to go through canvas.
I did that last year. I wasn't, you know, a part, but it was really interesting. I liked it.
Yeah.
Time well spent.
And then at the bottom, I've given you a list of all the county candidates that have filed as of the filing deadline. We have not received any other filings. And that's pretty much all I have for the agenda request. Does anybody have any?
What was the filing deadline, by the way?
Filing deadline was the 27th.
Okay, thank you.
We were here nine to 12 and I did not have anyone file. And we have not received any filings that were postmarked by the 27th in the mail.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to agenda item number four. Mr. Keith Lowry, Jersey County Community Administration.
Thank you all. With your permission, I'd like to invite Jake for the Mark Ward Director.
Absolutely.
I'm here to request the distribution, an early distribution from the West Virginia First Foundation to help us through a tough time. And first of all, I'd like to explain what it is we do because that really gives a key. And then I'll go on to explain why I'm here, and that will be helpful. I'm going to do this by starting off with a person I'm going to call John. And John has been an addict, has lived in this county for many years. If you walk the streets, he's probably come up to you at some time and asked for money. John is a drug addict. He's homeless. He's had trauma in his life. He's been, he was abandoned. He has no trust in anybody. He had mental health problems and he had psychiatric medication needs that weren't being filled. Three months ago, John came to us and said, my ex-wife just got incarcerated and I've got two children that I need to take care of, so I want to straighten my life out. So we provided him emergency shelter. We got him clothing and food for his kids. We got him into counseling because that's part of what we do. We also got him into psychological counseling, so he got his meds back under control. We got him into basic medical care. And then last month, he moved into permanent housing for which we paid a great deal of move-in expense because his ex-wife had not paid any utility bills and they were in arrears and they would not hook up the new apartment until all the past due bills were there. So that's what we took care of as well. What I'm trying to say is that this one instance with John required hundreds of hours of staff and professional services and a couple thousand dollars just in gross cash expenditures. That's what we do. Because when somebody comes up and is addicted to opioid, it's intermingled with all of the other problems. A person who is an addict usually is homeless. They have all kinds of mental health issues. They have abandonment issues. They have other mental issues that they have to deal with. And unless you treat all of them together, you're not going to give that person the ability or the hope to get out of their addiction problem. He's now fully employed, as I said. He's in his apartment. He's raising his two kids, but he's still coming to us for mental health counseling and for psychiatric medication management. And we're going to provide that until he is totally on his own. The reason I'm asking for this distribution, emergency-wise, is because according to the MOU that came out of the West Virginia First Foundation, approved uses, I don't know if you have that. I have copies if you'd like.
I would love a copy. I don't have one on me. Thank you.
Sure.
It should also be in your-
Oh, is it?
I've highlighted here, first couple of pages, the pieces that are relevant.
I don't have that. No. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
But this is exactly what the West Virginia First Foundation MOU was designed and the money collected was characterized to be spent for. Now, I realize that the county has received this money, but you have to go through a process for distribution. And I'm happy to participate in that. But let me tell you why now that I'm here to ask you. For those that know me, I love humor. And one of my favorite quotes from Ronald Reagan is, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help," which are the nine most feared words in the English language. About a year and a half ago, everybody in this county knows that we've been trying to build a housing, emergency shelter, permanent one. And that is the building block or getting addiction recovery started because people have to have a place to stay and they have to trust where they're going to go. So a year and a half ago, we were approached by a representative of a federal agency that said, "We've got some money for you. All we need you to do is fill out this application and submit it. And we're going to distribute the funds to help you build your shelter no later than the end of July, the first part of August of 2023." Part of the application required that we do some engineering work, some architectural work, some statements of work, some scope of work, and it cost us a lot of money to do that. Then in September, they came back and so I guess that August deadline was gone. In September, they came back and said, "No, you have to resubmit your package. We have a different set of rules that you have to go by. We need you to resubmit another package and it's going to require that you do some more outlay of cash." So we did that. And then in November, they came back and said, "No, it's not quite there. You have to submit another package, a bunch more questions. You have to do a lot more expenditures in order for this package to go through." So I became very frustrated. We still went through, we spent over $150,000 out of our operating budget chasing this federal dollar, which I was told would be done in August. So I presumed that those were going to be reimbursed. So I called for an emergency meeting with this federal agency three weeks ago. And they came up and said, "Well, yeah, it's probably going to be another six months before we make a decision, so you're not even approved yet," which was contrary to what we were told a year and a half ago. And oh, by the way, you're going to have to require some more expenditures. And basically, I said, "No, I'm not spending any more money. I can't do it. I can't afford it because I'm out of operational funds." So why I'm here is last fiscal year, two fiscal years ago, we had 2,300 visitors to our office. Last fiscal year, we had over 4,200 people visit our office. Since October, we've grown an additional 18% a month. So we are just overwhelmed with people that are mostly Jefferson County residents. And then people come up to me and say, "Well, how come you didn't budget for this?" Well, part of our budget is, excuse me, very little of our budget is guaranteed money. The rest of it comes from grants, gifts, donations, and requests. And so because I made the mistake of trusting that this government employee said, "We're going to get you this money by August of 2023," I went to the great expense of making sure that I answered all their questions, which incurred a lot of expense to us in architectural fees, drawings, statements of work, cost estimates, all of those things, and engineering. So after that meeting, I went to see, how can I make up for this? Because we need more money to help the people that we're in. And I'm not getting reimbursed, and I don't have a hope of getting reimbursed for another six months. I approached the city of Charlestown. They also received a grant from the West Virginia First Foundation. And Mayor Trainer, is he here?
Yes.
Oh. You can say, he agreed that we would present to his city council next week for $30,000. And we worked, see if we can't come up here and present a request to you for $70,000. Now, I realize this is early, but it is well worth, well within the scope of things that are approved. And frankly, we're in dire need because I have more people coming through the door. And we are currently providing the service for the entire county. Jake, do you have anything to say?
The need is great. And and the idea of having to turn away people and not pay staff. The doors of JCC have been open for 40 years, serving this county for 40 years. And our hope is that we can continue that service to a group of people that most people just want to disappear.
On average, two people a month, we get back into full-time employment. On average, we put two people a month into permanent housing. But all of that costs hundreds of hours and a lot of expense. Mayor, do you have anything? I'll just piece point, we're going, this is on the agenda for the city council as well on Monday, this coming Monday. Or basically, they're asking for $30,000 from our bunch from the opioid asset. We're going to take a call.
How much did you guys get?
About $190,000.
Okay. Thank you.
And I realize that there will be a formal process. And I tell you upfront today, when that formal process is proposed by you, that we will participate. We will submit and come back before you to say, here's, here's what we've done and here's what we need to do and here's what we could be doing. As of yesterday, I met with a different builder and I can't go into any details because it's so preliminary. But this builder said, "Look, I could probably build you this homeless shelter and have it done in four months for under $400,000." Because he's going to donate much of his labor. So all of those things are coming together. But to get to this point, I've had to expend a huge amount of money to get to that point. And frankly, if I walk away from this government agency and say, "Keep your money," I'll probably do that because it's just, it's just driving me crazy. Anyway, that's my presentation. I'm open for questions.
Sorry, Mr. Lowry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay.
The, the money that you're talking about, was that the million that was talked about by Shelley Moore Capito? Is that what that was or is that something different?
That's something different. We currently have two other pending proposals. One of them is a earmark that was approved by Shelley Moore Capito and my Senator Manchin through the HUD Subcommittee. It passed the Senate. I believe it's passed the House, but there hasn't been a conference and it has to be signed by the president. So all that money is stuck up in politics on Capitol Hill, which I can't affect. We're currently also working with the state of West Virginia and have been for over a year and a half to get some funding for them. But it is a struggle simply because we get told to keep going around in circles and talk to other people. But we're still trying.
So the money that was talked about by Capito and Manchin, that was a million, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, it was $1,300,000.
Oh, thank you.
The reason it was 1 million, 1 million is for us, 300,000 was for us to join with our partners, West Virginia University Med and Shenandoah Community Health, to build a health facility. And that is also pending, but it's stuck up on Congress.
Of course. But the, and thank you, the next one that you were discussing was you were doing something with the state. You're waiting for West Virginia, the state, to do something. How much was that grant or whatever?
Well, we have been asking anywhere for, depending upon which committee and what time.
I see. There's not a set amount.
Well, I will tell you, last year, before the budget came out, we had been, I'd been down personally to Charleston several times. We were doing 12 million, asking them to build the whole complex or help us build the whole complex. But with the pushing forward of the 25% income tax or whatever it turned out to be, or 50% income tax, we were told, no, you're not going to get a dime because we don't have it left. But they did find enough money to buy, build a baseball stadium. That's okay.
Something. And we have a lot of money sitting there and-
This year, we were invited to go down and apply for $2 million from a different committee. And so we're in the process of that. But again, that's a political thing and we're doing our best.
So that's not something that you've even been promised. It was-
Correct.
Just discussed.
We received the invitation to apply.
Yeah. That was nice. Okay.
That was very nice.
And that would be for 2 million if that comes through.
Or somewhere around that.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm just looking for a-
If they came back and said, "We'll give you a million," I would say, "Thank you very much" and walk out the door.
Okay.
So we were invited to apply for $2 million. Whether that comes or whether it's a subordinate piece, I don't know.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So you're asking for this funding mostly for shelter, correct? Or?
I'm asking for, this money will go to reimburse our operating budget because I have expended our operating budget to prepare for the construction of the shelter through the federal government.
Okay.
But that doesn't appear it's going to happen. So I still need to follow up with that. But I need to replenish my operating money right now because I've spent it all doing things that have not come to fruition yet.
And then I'm just curious to know, because we are talking about the opiate settlement funds and treatment programs and those sort of, that's the bucket of money we're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
What do you do or how do you work with Mountaineer Recovery or?
We have about-
Other recovery.
We have about 70 partners that we work with. Mountaineer Recovery is one of them. But we also work with various state agencies with the Department of Health and Human Services and DHR, or it's got different names. We work with Berkeley County Schools, but we also work with Jefferson County Schools. And anytime somebody comes to us, we'll go out of our way to help them solve a problem. One of the things that we're seeing a lot of now is domestic violence and fleeing of domestic violence. And we currently have four cases of domestic violence, which are indirect causes by drug addiction.
I guess my main concern right now, and you've already kind of mentioned this, is again, this is opiate settlement money we just received.
Yes.
We haven't had a workshop, set any parameters around how to use this money in accordance with the guidelines. Commissioner Kraus and I were just in Charleston where we sat through a presentation. I think I shared some of that information with the other commissioners. I guess just pulling money out of these funds, I'm really paused right now to make sure that we're using it in accordance with those guidelines and for the treatment that it's been basically earmarked or designed to treat.
That's why I started out with a story of what I told you about John. We currently have multiple of those issues going on, but it requires hundreds of hours of effort and a lot of money to do that.
Absolutely. I can, I can only imagine. I commend you for the help that you're giving to these people. It's a wonderful and generous thing. It really is. I don't know if I'm being loud enough. Sorry. What I was going to say, and I'm not sure if you're aware, I just learned about it, House Bill 4593. Do you, do you know what that is?
No.
Okay. Sorry. I don't mean for it to sound like an inquisition. I was just, I'm just learning about it myself. It was introduced, well, I'm not going to go over all the different names in, in our legislature. In it, it requires the West Virginia First Foundation to comply with the Open Governmental Proceedings Act and the Freedom of Information, and that, I can't talk this morning, Freedom of Information Act. And it's important that people understand when we get this money, it's not, everybody knows, it's not an endless well, right? It does come to an end at some point. And we have to be really careful how we spend it and it has to be very clearly laid out where it's going, how it's being used. And that's, the last action on that bill was January 12th. It was sent to the judiciary. And I certainly hope that they can kind of move a little quicker because people are starting to get their funds. But it's, if it's not already in the West Virginia First Foundation bylaws, you know, it needs to be. You know, we need to be very careful about that.
What I gave to you is the appendix from the West Virginia First Foundation Memorandum of Understanding that was sent out to everybody. Those are the rules that everybody has to follow. And so I gave you the portions that directly apply to what we're doing.
So to be fair, thank you, Eddie. You're right, it was, but it was in the way back of our agenda packet.
Because I have it in my section.
Yes, ma'am. I noticed that. Thank you very much. But thank you for this, to put my hands on quickly. But yeah, it, so because it's not written in there yet that anybody who needs to see can find out exactly where that money's going and how it's being spent, I'm a little cautious at this point.
That's fine. My, our books are open to the public. Anybody can come by and see what we're doing. Our 1099s are posted online. Everything that we do is open to the public.
Yeah, I'm kind of, go ahead, Jane.
Well, I was just going to see if we could have agreement to ask our Eddie to, our interim administrator, to research the process or what the parameters are or develop a way to work through requests.
If you go back to my, my section, I recommended having a public hearing where we'd have an expert come in and give us an overview of, first, the opioid problem in Jefferson County, then how the opioid settlement could be used. The public could then give comments of how they would like it to be used. And possibly a second, once everyone is informed about how to use the funds, then entities could then pitch their case for how they would like to use it and the amount that they would be requesting.
You know, and have an application and all that. You know, and have an application and all that.
Much like the, what I'm thinking of is much like the.
Right. But my one concern that this, I believe, was somewhere I read was a request for emergency funding.
Yes, we, we are in dire straits right now because we've spent so much money trying to provide housing and dealing with the opioid people that we are in need. And if we don't get the funding, then we have to cut back on what we serve.
I do have a question for County Ministry. We still have funds in our ARPA funding. Could we use this request, use ARPA funding for this request? Because it seems like it is a dire need right now.
Yes.
Or do we now? I'm looking at Bessie.
We have Bessie here who can tell us the amount. Hopefully she may not be able to reach it right.
How much we have left in ARPA?
Yes, ma'am.
About one sixty-nine thousand.
Okay.
That has not been allocated.
Okay, so, so we could, we could fund this with our, with our remaining ARPA money, correct?
Let me also just add to you that in recognition of what you said, that we understand this is one time. One of the actions that we have taken in recognition of this is we now have a grant writer who's on board, who's writing grants to fill these gaps. You stole from me, my previous grant writer. But we do have a full-time grant writer and we are fully engaged within the community. You know that we've had a concert last year. You know, we have another concert coming up. We are actually going forward to do everything in our power to make sure that we don't fall into this, but the biggest, the shortfall, but the biggest thing is my goal is to get a shelter by November.
Right, yeah.
And that is my goal. So I'm, I'm forced into that. However, I'm not going to spend any more money out of our operating budget to fulfill any other requests that come in chasing this other money because I just can't afford it. So I've already told them the same thing. I'm happy to fill out any application, do whatever you want, but if you ask me to spend another dime, I'm not doing it.
Let's start with some basics. I think everybody on the dais knows the answer to these questions. But could you just explain to the public, what is the West Virginia First Foundation? And what is the source of money for that?
So the West Virginia First Foundation is the result of a lawsuit that was begun by Patrick Morrissey, the Attorney General of West Virginia, who sued a couple of pharmaceutical companies for their actions and involvement in pushing opioids onto the general public as pain relievers in an uncontrolled manner. That is my words. I didn't read that anywhere.
Right.
But that's essence, essence what it is.
Is this foundation funded by taxpayer dollars?
No, no, the foundation is totally funded by the settlement from the lawsuit. There's a structure in place, five, I think, one, five people were appointed by the governor, six people. And then each of the zoning area, each of the areas were able to appoint one person. Our own prosecuting attorney, Matt Harvey, was appointed by the governor. And he is actually the Chair of the Board. And he's the one who told me that this, and sent me the MOU and the appendices and said, here's, here's the goal, here's what we have to go by. I've been in conversations with Matt a, a great deal about this to make sure that we are within the scope of what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, and I can just, so of the total settlement, the foundation is holding about seventy-two point five percent of that. The remainder's been distributed amongst the counties and municipalities around the state.
And that's why I asked Mayor Traynor to come here because it's not just you. I'm actually going to the other municipalities to say, hey, we need some help too because everybody's participating in the results of our efforts.
I, I, I see there is some concern because it's, we haven't really got a clear guidance yet on this money. But we did get clear guidance on our ARPA money and your needs are immediately, immediate. So I, I don't have a problem personally using our ARPA money for this. And, and then once we get clear guidance on this, the first foundation money, we'll, we know then have a public hearing and try to figure it out from there.
And I'll be back in front of the microphone.
Okay, that sounds fair. I, I, I would like to move a motion to approve the Jefferson County Community Ministry request for seventy thousand dollars to be, to be pulled from our remaining money from our ARPA funds.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'm generally opposed to using taxpayer dollars for a charity, even if the charity is fantastic. But the West Virginia First Foundation funds are not from the taxpayer. They're from the opioid settlements. And this charity is designed to address the opioid crisis. So I think that fits a narrow exception to the general rule. I would be supportive of using foundation funds that are distributed to the county for that reason. And I think there's a, there's a difference between ARPA funds and foundation dollars relating to the source of the money.
Well, I, I, I understand your concern to a degree, but I also understand the concern that this is an emergency request. This is not, you know, they're out of operating funds and that's critical to me. I, I think they fill a great need in our county and I think we need to support it.
Yeah. All right, any other, discuss, any more discussion?
There's a motion on the floor. If, if it fails, I'd be interested in, in making a motion to set a public hearing at the next available date. So if you wouldn't mind not closing the agenda item.
Sure, sure. All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question. A public hearing for the settlement money.
Yeah, as, as suggested by the.
Yeah, it's in her, it's down in her report.
It's in her, later on. It's in her agenda question. We'll save it to the end of that.
Fair enough.
All right, all right. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
No.
All right, I'm sorry. Aye, okay, nay.
I said nay.
Nay. Motion passes three, two, correct? Yes, three, 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 two approval for, and money will be taken out of ARPA.
Thank you very much and I will be back to participate in what other process comes out of your discussions for the opioid distribution.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number six, Laura Kuhn, Director of Fleet and Facilities.
Did we go right around number five?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, number five, I'm sorry. My, my apologies. I'm looking, I'm looking at the. All right, yeah, number five. Sorry.
It's too good to be true.
Depending on what glasses I'm looking through, I gotta, you know, twist my head, one of these readers, sorry.
All right. I'm Kelly Franklin, Executive Director of Jefferson Day Report Center. I'm here on, for I guess the tenth year now with the Community Corrections Grant. This is fiscal year twenty-five is due. And the county applies for the grant each year and this funding is used to help offset the jail cost. To give you a little bit of background of fiscal year twenty-four, the county applied for a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from the state funds, was awarded the full a hundred and fifty-five thousand. With that, the grant does require the county to match funds. In fiscal year twenty-four, there was five hundred and fifty referrals from the judicial system to the program. That is adults only. That does not include the four hundred and twenty-three youth that came through our program. With that, there was twenty-two thousand and forty-three interventions. When I say interventions, that is individual therapy, group therapy, drug screening, medication management and also drug testing. So that's, that small amount of a hundred and fifty-five thousand was used to help offset that. And the cost to the county in the jail bill, if those people were incarcerated in lieu of day report, was nine point six million. So this year, we are asking for the same, a hundred and fifty-five thousand from the state with an allocation of a hundred and fifty-five thousand from the county. That is not a request for the budget is already built in as it has been in previous years. And there is no request for increase for that. So if approved, the county would enter a contractual agreement with West Virginia Community Corrections DJCS. And it just requires several signatures from Mr. Stolper and one from Ms. Shadle.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, you know, I'm in full support of this grant because we've done it for numerous years and I think it certainly fills a need. I'm just curious though about unfortunately your fire and how's the new location working out for you?
So we, our building did suffer the fire in July and was totally destroyed. We made it out with three laptops and two cell phones, but there was no disruption in services. So we sat up across the street at the fire department banquet hall until we moved to Kearney'sville. It is working out very well. We're next to the DMV. It's on the bus route. Clients seem to enjoy it. We have both youth and adults in there as well.
And that's what I wanted to make sure that, you know, I thought I knew where it was, that it was very accessible and on the Pantry and Bus Route, so everybody could get there that needed to.
It does. It is on the route, but we also provide transportation to both adults and youth. We do have two vehicles.
Okay.
And a driver.
I attended that grand opening that day and it was really nice facility. Are you planning on staying there for some time?
We are for right now. Our board is exploring options of either maybe purchasing or building a facility. But of course with that, some additional funding is needed. So they're also exploring that.
Okay, thank you.
Did I ask anything? Anything? All right. Like, like Commissioner Tev said, we've been doing this for a long time. Appreciate everything y'all do. I made a motion to authorize the President to actively have to enter into a contractual agreement with the Division of Justice Administration's Services to receive and administer grant funds and provide the required county match through the Jefferson County Day Reports Center Budget Allotment pursuant to provisions of the Community Corrections Program.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries five, zero.
Do you want to buy a purchase?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, all right.
Not doing too bad on time, Ms. Laura. Still doing okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to move on to agenda item number six.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I am here today to request your approval on the Enterprise Leasing Agreement for our fleet. Probably been working on this for about a year now. Started working with Enterprise and then pulled the sheriff in on it because he has the most vehicles in our fleet and he was on board immediately with this because of the challenges that we were having. So on, in, back in June, I came before you and request permission to look into contracting with Enterprise. So you authorized me to move forward with that part. So I'm back now with the agreement. Just to remind you of some of the background on this. Our current procurement processes encountering significant challenges, particularly in, in the acquisition of vehicles. Our aging fleet components are leading to increased breakdowns, hefty repair costs, diminished fuel efficiency, potential safety concerns. So the shift to a leased vehicle program is a strategic move that addresses these challenges. By adopting this approach, we can phase out the older vehicles, replacing them with new reliable models. So this should mitigate our current issues and ensure continual cycle of replacement. So right now, your fleet, we have approximately five hundred and fifteen vehicles. We have about forty-four vehicles with over a hundred thousand miles. We have forty-nine vehicles that are over ten years old. And if you break down those years, we have twenty-one vehicles in the ten to fifteen-year range, fifteen to twenty in the eight, or fifteen, eighteen vehicles in the fifteen to twenty-year range. And then we have ten vehicles that are over twenty years old. And one thing my mechanic always reminds me of as far as odometer readings and mileage, one hour of idle time equals thirty-three miles on the odometer. And a lot of our vehicles have very high idle times as well. But that's just the nature of the job. The sheriff's office has to work out their vehicles. They have dogs in their vehicles. So, you know, we have high idle times as well. So the, the problem we are running into with buying the vehicles outright, of course, you know, twenty twenty, we started with the supply chain issues and it hasn't gotten better. It's gotten worse. When we do an RFP, there's a limited window there. The manufacturers open those fleet vehicle orders for a very short time. And the dealers don't know when they're going to open those windows. They have like an estimate, but they don't know. And then the manufacturer will close them immediately. This year, we're hearing no Fords, no GMs as far as police vehicles. So right now, we have Dodge that we have vehicles that Enterprise will be able to acquire for us for the sheriff's office. So with the RFP process, we're not able to get those vehicles in those windows and they're really not available. We have vehicles that FY twenty-three were canceled. I think I ordered seven. I only got three. And then the process, the time for ordering them, it's nine months to a year to get a vehicle. So, you know, and there's also, we could piggyback on like the state contracts. The state goes through the bidding process and we have those available. But even the state is no longer offering those state contracts. So we don't have, even have that anymore. So our fleet is obviously getting old. We're not rotating those vehicles out as we need to. There's safety concerns. You have, you know, vehicles that can break down at any time. And then costly expenses. We, we don't want to have to replace engines and transmissions. The time a vehicle gets old enough that that has to happen, you know, it's time for that vehicle to be taken out of our fleet. So, and also pool vehicles, sheriff's office, if they need a pool vehicle, their car is in the shop being repaired, you know, there was an accident, deer hit, all these things that can make them a vehicle out of service. They don't have sufficient vehicles to back them up. And we also require pool vehicles when an employee or an electric goes on to, on a training trip. And we don't have a good supply of those either. So we're, in working with Enterprise, they've come up with a plan to replace about thirty to thirty-four of our vehicles right now. I think sixteen, eighteen of those were sheriff's vehicles. And all of this fits in with the money that was allocated for this current year's budget. So we're not going over budget. We're, we're, the funds that were allocated to us will be used for these vehicles. Enterprise can also outfit for the, the equipment that the sheriff's office needs, with the exception of like specific equipment to Jefferson County. And that's put in with the lease. And the good thing about that is if they do the outfit, we don't start paying on that lease until that vehicle is delivered to us after it's been outfitted. Because I know the sheriff right now is seeing extended wait times once we purchase a vehicle and getting that vehicle outfitted. So that, that's a concern too. So with all that, I'm hoping to move forward and get your permission to sign off on that contract so we can get started with the contract. Nothing is permanent. We can say no to this anytime. There's no, we, we don't have to order a certain amount of vehicles each year. If next year we decide we don't need any vehicles, we don't have to order any vehicles. Or if there's, you know, budget constraints that we can't do that, we don't have to. So we're not locked into anything permanently. The leases are five-year leases and we do, Enterprise will take our current vehicles, sell them. That money goes back into the account for future leases. And there's also equity at the end of the five-year lease. So any equity left on that vehicle will also go back into our account towards future vehicle acquisitions.
Okay.
Is there something?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to explain, I have fifty now with cars, over a hundred thousand miles, unsafe, right? With this plan, I'll be able to rotate my fleet every three years. You're going to take it back to about seventy thousand miles until they sell it, moving back into the, into the fund. I have a sheriff in Maryland that loves this plan. He is a larger partner than I am, but still, the idea that I have my transport vehicles, right? My, my transport deputies take people all over the state has a hundred and fifty thousand mile mark. Right? This will allow me to rotate my fleet every three years. My deputies will have safe vehicles and my deputies will be able to go out and do the job that you're paying, that we pay them to do and protect this county with a good, solid, new vehicle. And protect this county with a good, solid, new vehicle. And they'll get, like I said, they'll get a new vehicle every three years, which means that they'll be, the county of overtime will no longer have to purchase vehicles. You give me two, three, maybe four vehicles a year. If you realize that if I have 35 deputies plus my, my process servers and my other personnel, the transport vehicles, I'm rotating a fleet every 10 to 11 years.
Yeah.
It's just not feasible anymore with the amount of money you're giving me for vehicles. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Ms. Coon, but I want to let you know that I am all for this. When she mentioned, again, I called a friend of mine who's a sheriff in Maryland who does the enterprise. He says, I rotate my fleet every three years. It's a great plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, yes, either way. Oh, go ahead, please.
Well, no, I just have a few questions because I know, you know, you've got a, at least one or two trucks, pickup trucks. Should you, well, we haven't had much snow, knock on wood. But how would those fit into this plan? I mean, you talking about the sheriff's vehicles being outfitted. What about where your maintenance needs? Like the guys with the tools in it to go on site and repair things and the snowplows and those sorts of things?
They can outfit us with anything that we need. If we need a snowplow, they can provide that. I can always provide that after the fact, but if we want them to do it, they will do as much or as little as we need done before they deliver that vehicle. So they're willing to work with us on any vehicle that needs upfitting.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And, you know, I know in here are the vehicles that ESA uses for their staff, but it's not the ambulances. So that's still a whole separate maintenance issue within ESA.
Right. And I had spoken with ESA about that and they would also be on board with the non-ambulance vehicles with leasing.
Being within this, yeah. Well, I'm, I'm more concerned about keeping the ambulances operational, but I don't know who's going to be our person in panic for that. But that's, that's my, those are a couple of my concerns. So, yeah. But no, I think, I mean, this sounds almost too good to be true. It really does.
Thankfully, you know, it's not something that we can't back out of. If we realize it's not working for us, we don't have to keep leasing vehicles. We can go back to what we were doing, which that's obviously not working for us. So, yeah.
Sure. Let me start by saying I'm going to support this. I mean, if it's in your budget and it's something you need to provide emergency services, we're going to support it. I did have some questions because you raised issues that we seem to be having with procurement and I find that distressing. I wonder if there's a way that we can fix the underlying root problem that has put us in this situation. Could you, could you tell us a little bit more about the problems we have with procurement? It seemed to be about timelines. Could you explain that more, please?
That's part of it.
Most of the vehicles are in the sheriff's department. Would it be all right with you if the sheriff would join you on the day as to speak on these issues as well? Is that all right, Sheriff?
Yeah.
The problem is, is that GM all day, they'll come out and say, okay, we're going to open up a window for what is called a PDB, Police Patrol Vehicle. We're going to open up a window this day. And they say it is going to be opened up, it's going to be open for a week. And then they get so many orders that first day that they shut it down the same day and they take no more orders. So the sheriff's departments all over the country are reaching out to department and we'll get it, I'll get a, I'll get a email from the Sheriff's Association because I'm on the board there. And he'll say, okay, this agency, this dealership has four craft, four explorers available. And immediately sheriffs are jumping on it. And that's the problem is that the, not just the vehicles, but the parts of the vehicles. And one of the best things about this is that if my vehicle, if my deputies crash a vehicle, run into a deer or whatever, and it's totaled, whatever, we call them and they replace the vehicle. Right? Because they're not buying three. They're not buying six. They're buying hundreds of vehicles. Anybody that's in their lease program. So they'll, and that's the problem is right now is that the purchase windows close. They're open for, they say it's going to be open a week and they get so many orders from whatever agencies all over the country. And all of a sudden now it's closed because the dealerships are going, watching it, watching, watching, okay, now. And they're putting the orders in and then it's, it's done and you can't order anymore for the next year. And that's the problem with, right now with ordering through the local dealerships is the windows of the manufacturer's board, Dodge and/or Chevrolet or GM. Open it and close it in a matter of minutes. And that's the problem of saying the vehicle.
So the question I have, and again, I'm going to support the leasing program if that's what you want to do. But I do want to address the underlying problem. It seems to apply to not just the sheriff's office, but across our fleets. Is there a change to our procurement practice such that we authorize spending by a department that could then be executed when, when a window of availability opens?
It's just, yeah, it's just difficult because when you're, you're submitting RFP, it takes while. You have to advertise it and, you know, wait for those bids to come back. And then, you know, we have to then put in the requisition for those funds to be expended. So there's a whole process that takes probably the time you start the RFP till that requisition gets approved at least probably two months. So, and it's hard because the manufacturers can't tell us when those windows are opening. It's hard for us to judge when to start that process. So, so, yeah. And, you know, there's other options where we could piggyback on state contracts because they're always open. But when we did, when we were able to do RFPs, because there was a time when I could order a vehicle anytime I wanted to. The RFP process was great because we were getting very competitive bids on these vehicles that were cheaper than the state contract pricing. So it worked back then, but it's just not anymore with the dealership's not, or the manufacturers not having these windows that are open. And the dealers are frustrated too. I've spoken to several of them that say we get no notice. They, it'll be open one day and that day they'll get a call that says it's closed. You can't place any orders. And they also have ordered vehicles for us that have been canceled after the order has been placed.
I would like to address, you know, underlying procurement process problems, but it's what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong. What I'm hearing is it's really the market conditions have changed. It's not necessarily a problem with the government itself.
Yes.
Not just that also. At one time, the state purchasing office, the state police did a, would send out a fifth process. And they'd say, okay, if you want this kind of police car, this kind of police car, this bike, that you go to this dealership, they've, they've sent in, we bought, the state would do the RFPs. So we wouldn't have to do it. It would just be on, and the state police would stop doing that. So each county now has to do their own RFPs, especially for police vehicles.
Okay.
And now at one time, I, because I was in charge of buying vehicles for the sheriff's office when I was a lieutenant. I would go to the, what kind of vehicle we want, go to that dealership, it's okay, order me six. Okay, you got them and let you know when they're in. And we'd go down to whatever dealership in Charleston or in Greenbrier County, pick them up, bring them back. That's the way it was. It's no longer like that. State police don't do, don't do statewide bids anymore. And the Sheriff's Association is thinking about starting to do it only because to make things easier for each agency. But again, that's also one of the problems is that state procurement or state purchasing office no longer does, the state police no longer does bids for the whole state.
Okay. A similar question. And I think this might be for Director Sign. How would this interplay with the vehicle replacement program that we had talked about, you know, fitting into the? I don't know if that's for Director Sider for you, Director.
Yeah. And me and Mike had talked about this and he's very much on board with, I don't know where the ambulances would stand. And I can check with enterprise on that because that's not a question I've asked yet, but like his non-analyst vehicles would very much fit into with this plan.
Okay. Okay.
Absolutely. Our small, small vehicle fleet, we're going to do the same process when prior to on board as county department. And it's, it's, the issues are at the factory.
Yeah.
And there's no, nothing we're going to correct here within our government now we do this. It's literally, there is no available stock to get the dealerships, the manufacturers run, when they make these special pursuit vehicles, they, they do three months of this. So they build that and that's done, they move on to another product on their cinema. So you just have limited access to these vehicles. And our, I'd say our last two vehicles we purchased were administrative vehicles and that's why they're great. We, we'd only have white, all vehicles are white with blue decals. There was no white vehicles to find. That's what we had settled.
Gracious. Well, yeah, I really think it's a supply chain issue. I mean, it's the same thing with parts. You, I mean, it's, it's across the industry, also in the ag industry. It's a challenge to maintain equipment.
We, we had a deer in one of our chase cars about two years ago and it was out for six months.
Yeah.
Because getting, even since COVID, still live shops can't get parts.
Yeah.
I mean, you have a vehicle that gets damaged in an accident, it's out for several months.
Well, everybody should.
Insurance companies nowadays, a lot of times you're, you look at them, know that they can fix that. They're totally vehicles so that we can, you know, purchasing, buy two more and get a used vehicle someplace. But, and to have a, have a cruiser sit in my lot damaged for six months is not uncommon.
We should all watch who we vote for for, for president. I think that's a very important part of this problem.
Laura, I have a question. Do we know, like the cost breakdown of when we would see, I'm familiar with lease programs, but versus the way we're going now or what we're doing now and moving to this, when there would be a break even or we might would see a benefit of implementing this program versus the way we're doing it?
I haven't really figured that. I know that enterprise works with us to make those monthly payments as low as they can while also making the depreciation level enough so that we're getting money back at the end of the lease. But I could work to maybe, you know, figure out what that cycle would be for breaking even.
I would, I'd just like to see, because I know when we go through budget, we allocate a lot of money for vehicles. And I would just like to see, and also for a matter of the public, is we're making the right decision and using those, those monies wisely. So I would be curious just to see that. But I'm familiar with these types of programs and I, I think it's a good move for us.
I think we, I think it would be good for us to try it. You know, we can pull out of it anytime. So if the numbers are not looking good, we can adjust. So, but yeah, this is a very, it's a lot of dollars keeping, not only buying the vehicles, but keeping them operational.
Moving, yeah, sure. Well, I would like to move to authorize the Director of Fleet and Facilities to enter into a lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management to transition the county's fleet to a leased vehicle program.
Second, second, or either one, Pasha or I. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you move on to the next, I just wanted to say I really commend Laura for working with the sheriff's office in all departments when she could buy no vehicle.
Right.
So if you look at how many vehicles you authorized the purchase of, how many she tried to purchase, how many just contracts fell through. She found a creative solution to a really difficult problem. So I really want to commend Laura for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to gen item number seven. Mike Sine, Director of Jefferson County Emergency Services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Have a few hires, a couple of transfers from part-time to full-time and then one other item here. So we have two current employees that accepted full-time positions. We had vacancies. So the first one would be Cheyenne Edwards. She's going to transfer from part-time position to a full-time position as a firefighter EMT one. That's effective one fourteen to twenty-four and she'll continue at her current pay rate until she completes her probationary period.
All right. Anybody?
I'll move that Cheyenne Edwards be transferred from a part-time position to a full-time position as a firefighter EMT one, effective January fourteenth, 2024. She will continue at that current pay rate until completion of her probationary period.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries five zero.
All right. The next individual is Mr. Ronald Poe. Same thing. He's going from a part-time position to a full-time. He is a firefighter EMT two. Same effective date, January fourteenth of this year. And he'll also continue at his current pay rate.
I'll move that Ronald Poe be transferred from a part-time position to a full-time position as a firefighter EMT two, to be effective January fourteenth, 2024. He will continue at his current pay rate as previously approved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And Sarada, if, if you don't get the seconds, I was supposed to remind you, let me know. Because I know it's hard, it's hard to hear. Okay.
All right. We, we've completed some more interviews of new hires. We've lost quite a few of our part-time employees. So we're bolstering back up our part-time list. So the first are a group of firefighter EMTs. So we have Alyssa Pierce, Donovan King, Jared Morgan, William Sigman and Jeffrey Rightnow. They will all be part-time firefighter EMT ones, starting pay rate of nineteen sixty-seven an hour, effective one twenty-eight of twenty-four. Upon completion of their introductory period and meeting the requirements of AP ten sixty, they'll receive the promotion to firefighter EMT two. And their rate, pay rate will be adjusted to twenty sixteen per hour.
I'll make a motion that we move that Alyssa Pierce, Donovan King, Jared Morgan, William Sigman and Jeffrey Rightnow all be hired as part-time firefighter EMT one at a pay rate of nineteen dollars sixty-seven cents an hour, effective January twenty-eighth, 2024. Upon completion of the introductory period and meeting the requirements of AP ten sixty, they will receive a promotion to firefighter EMT two with a new pay rate of twenty dollars and sixteen cents an hour.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries five zero.
All right. The final three individuals are going to come on full-time as paramedics. As you know, we, we have budgeted to get our lieutenants out of the ambulances and, and into more of a field supervisor mode like they should be. So this is to fill those positions. We've been, I guess we're seven months into the budget year. So these individuals, Catherine Baker, Stacy Lentz and James West will all be hired as a full-time paramedic, firefighter, paramedic one at starting period of twenty-five dollars per hour, effective one twenty-eight, twenty-four. Upon completion of their introductory period and meeting the requirements of AP ten sixty, they'll receive the promotion to firefighter, paramedic two and have a new pay rate of twenty-five sixty-three per hour.
I move that Catherine Baker, Stacy Lentz and James West all be hired as full-time firefighter, paramedic one at a pay rate of twenty-five dollars an hour, effective January twenty-eighth, 2024. Upon completion of the introductory period and meeting the requirements of AP ten sixty, they will receive a promotion to firefighter, paramedic two with a new pay rate of twenty-five dollars and sixty-three cents an hour.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
All right. Up until, just to give you an update, up until about a week ago, that brought us up to no vacancies in our full-time. We, we did receive one resignation. We have an employee that's moving out of the area. So we're, we're in pretty good shape. Finally, it seems like we're getting a lot of applications.
Oh, good.
I think people were hesitant during the transition because of such a change, but it seems like we're getting a lot of qualified interest now. So. The final item is requesting approval to sign on to get the ESO fire reporting. ESO is a charting software system that we use for our ambulance reporting for our transport. That's how they chart, that runs the patient care. This company also has different segments. They have a segment to do fire reporting. That's something we've talked about trying to document how much time my employees are spending on calls. Several of the departments use the ESO fire as part of their fire reporting to the state. This would be something that was in the long-range plan when Director Nissel originally wanted to bring us on board as an apartment to eventually get our fire department ID to be a certified fire department and be eligible for additional fire grants moving forward. So fire reporting is one of the requirements to accomplish that. So I think it's, it accomplishes two things. It satisfies that goal down the road, but at this time it also it's an easy transition to start documenting how much time and where our people are being utilized on the fire side. It's the same software. Much of the information that already is collected just goes over into another section that they can easily and the employees know how to use it. They've used it for the fire departments as well. It's, the overall cost is ten thousand six hundred fifteen. We do get a credit or a discount because we already have the EMS. So the integration, the CAD integration is how it pulls the information. So that's a deduction of twenty four ninety five and then a setup fee. So we're looking at eight thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars to implement that. That's a yearly, be yearly fee. And we do have funds that are dedicated in the IT budget. Russ has that for hardware and software, so we could utilize those funds.
So it's gonna be my question, that's coming out of Russ's budget?
We, I, he's been in and outside, I've had a chance to talk to him, but we do have. Yeah, we have, we have quite, we have a balance there that's uncumbered.
Okay.
So shouldn't be a problem, but otherwise, you know, we could take it out of, we can use it in our budget or if we need to bring out our both. But I think this is a necessity moving forward to to document where our people are spending their time and then to for the long range goals.
Yeah, I'm just trying to determine if it's already in the budget.
Yeah, I have not seen Russ, he was, he was out the other day. So but I know we we have not spent nearly what was allocated for us, that he put in for us.
Okay, that's, that was gonna be my question. So you answered my question. I'll move a motion to approve the ESO fire reporting software, an amount of eight thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars to be pulled from our, your IT budget for emergency services.
A second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, motion carries five zero.
Mister President, could we take a short break?
Yes, yes ma'am, we'll take a short break.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we're moving on to gen item number eight, Roger Gill.
He's going to do bond releases first, and then.
I have bond releases, and then we have the impact fee annual report and the impact fee capital improvement plan. The first bond release is a request for a complete release of the remaining two hundred and one thousand dollars, two hundred and one thousand one hundred and thirty nine dollars from the construction bond for UFP Rantzen LLC, Universal Forest Products ransom plant expansion. That was planning commission file number S eighteen dash zero four. Projects located at two forty nine sixteenth Avenue. The work appears to be a hundred percent complete. There's a motion number one on the agenda request.
All right, I'll move to authorize the complete release, performance bond three zero zero five seven five five two with Western Surety Company, an amount of two hundred and one thousand one hundred and thirty nine dollars, construction bond amount for UFP Rantzen LLC, Universal Forest Products ransom plant expansion file S eighteen dash zero four.
Second?
Second, by Commissioner Maji. All, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, most carries five zero.
I'm trying to help Sarada keep the minutes. You made the motion, Mister Salper, who seconded it?
And Pasha.
Pasha, okay.
The second bond release is a request for a complete release of the remaining one million six hundred and forty thousand three hundred and ninety five dollars construction bond amount for Holtzman Oil Corporation, our business park lot sixteen, planning commission file number nineteen dash four dash SP. The project is located at sixty War Admiral Boulevard. The work appears to be one hundred percent complete.
I'll move to authorize the complete release of performance bond number B, is it a B or eight?
B.
B, B, okay, sorry, three, two, five, six, four, three, one, seven, with the Cincinnati Insurance Company, an amount of one million six hundred and forty thousand three hundred and ninety five dollars construction bond amount for Holtzman Oil Corp, Oral Corporation, our business park lot six, lot sixteen file nineteen dash four dash SP.
Second?
I think we have a sec, motion and a second by Commissioner Kraus. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries five zero.
Okay, the next items we have are the impact, annual impact fee reports. And Michelle is going to present the twenty twenty three impact fee annual report. And the annual report is your final report at the end of the year that documents everything that occurred with impact fees. It's like your official record for the year. And we have those going all the way back to the very first adoption of impact fees. And then the capital improvement plan is your plan moving forward in the next fiscal year as to how you're proposing to spend impact fee funds. So I'm going to let Michelle go ahead and present the impact fee annual report.
I don't know if you have any slack.
Good.
Yeah, can you hear me? Okay, good morning. This is a report for calendar year twenty twenty three for impact fees, the annual report pursuant to the Jefferson County Impact Fee Procedures Ordinance, Section six A one, at least once every year, not later than January thirty first of each year, beginning in the year two thousand five and prior to county commission's adoption of the annual budget and capital improvements program, the impact fee coordinator or designee chosen by the impact fee coordinator shall coordinate the preparation and submission of an annual report to the county executive and county commission on the subject of impact fees. The Impact Fee Procedures Ordinance, Section six A three, goes on to state the impact fee coordinator or the impact fee coordinator's designee shall submit the annual report to the county commission, who shall receive the annual report and which may take such actions as they deem appropriate, including but not limited to requesting additional data, analysis, and holding public workshops and or public hearings. The impact fee annual report for calendar year twenty twenty three is attached. Note that under Section two four one inflation adjustments, the inflation adjustment shown in the report will be automatically applied on April one, twenty twenty four. The inflation adjustment is automatically, is to automatically occur by dictate of the Impact Fee Procedures Ordinance two thousand three dash one, Section six B, unless the county commission acts to stay the adjustments to the impact fees. Considering the impact fee recalculation study occurred in twenty twenty, the fees reset based upon current market cost values at that time. Staff defer to the county commission on whether to apply or stay the annual inflationary adjustment. And if the county commission stays the inflation adjustment, the matter can be taken up again during presentation of the calendar year twenty twenty four annual report. Okay. So permitting for the new residential construction in Jefferson County in calendar year twenty twenty three increased relative to calendar year twenty twenty two. There were seven hundred and ninety six impact fee applications processed in calendar year twenty twenty three versus four sixty seven residential impact fee applications in twenty twenty two. Permitting for the new, for new commercial construction in Jefferson County in calendar year twenty twenty three increased relative to calendar year twenty twenty two. There were seventeen impact fee applications processed in calendar year twenty twenty three versus seven in twenty twenty two. In summary, there was a sixty six percent increase in new residential permit application in twenty twenty three versus twenty twenty two. Okay, I am on page five, table one. You can see where we had four hundred and sixty seven applications for residential in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, we had seven hundred and ninety six, which brings us to the grand total of six thousand one hundred and sixty six applications we've taken in since the day of impact fees.
So that's all the way back to two thousand?
Two thousand four.
Four. So just with residential dwellings only countywide, including municipalities, there have been six thousand one hundred and sixty six building permits issued for dwellings, new dwellings.
Correct. Okay, table one B on page six, twenty twenty two, we had seven commercial impact fee applications. In twenty twenty three, we had seventeen. Jefferson County uses a fiscal year which starts in July and runs through June of the next year. These values reported below span fiscal years twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four and run from January one, twenty twenty three through December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Table two presents the total fee calculation collection data, while tables three and four present the financial data categorized into county and municipal tax districts. The financial transaction information for the Office of Impact These general account is presented in table five. Table six presents the financial data for each of the five long term impact fee holding accounts, which includes schools, law enforcement, parks and recreation, emergency services, and our new category administrative facilities. So on page seven, table two, we're looking at residential impact fee collection just for, this is for county and municipal combined. I collected one million forty five thousand seven sixty five for calendar year twenty twenty three. Table three, found on page eight, narrows it down just to the county tax districts. There was a total of five hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and fifteen collected for twenty twenty three with the line share of the construction, new construction going in Charles Town at two hundred and thirty two thousand, followed by Shepherdstown at ninety three thousand.
Excuse me, just real quick, if we could go back to that, I have a whole punch right through a number. Harper's Ferry Grand Total, it's it's oh four Harper's Ferry Grand?
Yes, fifty eight thousand one eighty eight.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Okay, so table four on page nine, that is just for municipalities. I collected five hundred and twenty seven thousand three hundred and fifty. The line share is going into the city of Charles Town, which was three hundred and twenty three thousand, followed by Rantzen at two hundred and two thousand nine oh five. So the combined values or totals for county and municipal, again, was one million forty five thousand seven sixty five.
And you can see from those numbers that they're pretty evenly split. Half the impact fees collected were from within the municipalities, the other half were collected from outside.
Yeah. Page ten demonstrates accounting throughout the year for my general impact fee account. That's where all monies are deposited and also checks are cut.
That's the account where, when the impact fee payments come in, she deposits it. And then she does monthly transfers to each of the impact fee entity checking accounts.
Yes.
That holds their money.
And then on table, on page eleven, table six, this breaks down our impact fee holding accounts, which are the individual entities. For schools, the balance in January third was two million four thousand nine thirty one. Law enforcement was five fifty seven, three seventy eight. Parks was one million three twenty two, eight sixty four. EMS was ninety four thousand one oh eight. Administrative facilities was sixty four thousand, sixty one thousand four seventy six. Administrative facilities was sixty-four thousand, sixty-one thousand four seventy-six, I apologize. Fees dispersed from the long-term accounts for only two reasons, and that would be refunds and requisitions. Um, there is a typo in the report. I had no refunds this year, and the report says one.
I have a question for you real quick.
Sure.
On the previous page eleven. The admin facilities, what can that be used for? That's?
Admin facilities was created in the last impact fee study. You had purchased the gray building for the prosecutor's office. You put the money out of your general fund essentially right up front to buy it. Um, it was determined by the consultant that there was some excess capacity there for future growth. So under one of the methodologies called cost recovery, you can charge an impact fee on new growth for the value or that asset, based on the value of that asset, that extra part of that building and recover that cost. And, uh, there was an amount that was placed on that and, uh, was decided to charge that fee. And that money is going into this account and being held. Uh, so my take is, uh, you spent general funds to purchase it, is my understanding. You're recovering those funds. Those funds, unlike the other entities, I believe you can spend them on whatever you want to spend them on. So we're holding, uh, sixty-one thousand dollars right now. There's, there's no, it's not like Parks and Rec says we've got sixty-one thousand, we want to build a softball field. You're, you've already built it and you're getting your money back. So, um, there is money there, and that's why we have nothing in the capital improvement plan. We've never had anything under admin facilities or projects because it's cost recovery, and it's just sitting there waiting until, uh, you decide how you want to spend the money. And if you need the money in your general fund for some purpose, you make a requisition to her and she cuts you a check. That's how it works.
So.
So there you go.
So in theory, if we wanted to work on our parking lot, would that be a part of administrative facilities or is that a questionable?
My take is that this money is not tied to any capital category like the other entities. It's money you already put out and you're bringing it back, you're collecting it back in to be ultimately be put into your general account, your general fund, until you decide how you want to spend it, and I think you can spend it on whatever you want.
Okay.
Kind of like an expense reimbursement.
Right, right.
Yeah. Well, we have lots of maintenance projects that would, you know, we need to do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just found your sixty-one thousand.
Yeah.
And it keeps accruing interest, so.
Yeah.
Okay. The fee fundable projects approved by the impact fee program specialists for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, along with the approved funding amounts, are listed in table seven, which can be found on page twelve. The impact fee payments for projects listed on the F Y two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plans are listed in table eight. Projects eligible for funding by impact fees must be approved by the county commission. The impact fee fund, fundable projects for F Y two thousand twenty-five remain to be presented to the county commission for approval, which we'll be doing that after this report. Um, table eight is listed on page thirteen. Those are all of my requisitions that I processed for year two thousand twenty-three. You can see that schools has spent five million seven eighty-four thousand eight twenty-two. Parks, three ninety-seven, five sixty-three, for a grand total of six million one eighty-two, three eighty-five. Recommended changes to the ordinance, ordinances or procedures, we have no proposed changes at this time to the ordinances. Um, listed are all the impact fee ordinances in effect as of two thousand twenty-one. They were amended September two thousand twenty-one to reflect the new impact fee schedules adopted. There were a couple other changes and are listed below. The following projects appeared on the F Y two thousand twenty-four Jefferson County Impact Fee Improvement Plan, Capital Improvement Plan, and are listed because they have been identified by the Impact Fee Program Specialists as being eligible for funding by impact fees, either in whole or in part. Projects so identified represent remaining, maintaining the current level of service due to new growth. Exclusion of other projects listed in F Y two thousand twenty-four C I P, but not included here only indicates that they were not eligible for funding by impact fees and should not be taken as indication of their overall merit. So we have tables nine through thirteen listed. They're all potential funding, fundable projects. And the different entities for schools, table nine, we have seven million six ninety-five. Law enforcement is two oh five, two hundred and five thousand. Parks and Recreation in table eleven is one million seventy thousand. Jefferson County EMS or Emergency Services, it's eighty-one thousand, that is their cost recovery building mortgage. And then finally, we have the administrative facilities projects, which we have zero at this point until you further notify me of such. Proposed fee boundary districts, presently the only fee category which utilizes fee districts is law enforcement, which basically means that if there's a new house being constructed in municipalities of Harper's Ferry, City of Ranson, City of Charlestown, or any of the other municipalities, they do not pay law enforcement services because they have their own provided. Proposed fee schedule changes in two thousand twenty, all four impact fee categories underwent a recalculation with the addition of administrative facilities. Overall, the county commission reduced the current impact fee schedule amounts. The county updates its impact fee methodology on a five-year cycle. Therefore, schools, law enforcement, parks and rec, EMS, impact fee categories were due last for recalculation in calendar year two thousand twenty. The county commission recalculated the levels of service and impact fee amounts required to maintain this level of service adopted new fees in two thousand twenty-one. The next impact fee recalculation should begin in calendar year two thousand twenty-six. Inflation adjustments. It is generally recommended that all impact fee schedules not recalculated in any general calendar year be adjusted for inflation. By dictate of the Impact Fee Procedures Ordinance, the Impact Fee Program Specialist must use the price indexes for gross government fixed investment by type, which is published by the United States Bureau of Economic Analysis. That could be found on table fourteen, which is listed on page eighteen. Um, as per the Impact Fee Procedures Ordinance, two thousand three dash one, Section six B, the annual inflation adjustment will be applied on April one, two thousand twenty-four, unless the county commission acts to stay these adjustments. Staff defers to the county commission for a decision on whether to apply to stay or to stay the inflationary adjustment. Proposed changes to the level of service standards, West Virginia State Code, Chapter seven, the Article twenty requires that the county, the county maintain as part of the capital improvement program, level of service standards for the impact the applicable categories, which were last updated in two thousand twenty. The next scheduled update to the level of service standards will appear, occur in calendar year two thousand twenty-six. Proposed changes to the base data for fee calculation, there are no changes at this time. So going to that table fourteen, that is my source data that I have used from the Bureau of Economic Analysis. The inflationary adjustments result in a higher impact fee for all impact fee categories this year, except for schools, um, as it calculates out just to be a dollar again. Did you want to add anything? No? Okay. All right, so table fifteen, inflation adjustment for schools, there's zero differential, it would still be a dollar. On page nineteen, law enforcement, it varies from an increase of fifty-one dollars to seventy-one dollars. Parks and Rec is ninety to a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Emergency services is ten to thirteen dollars. And administrative facilities is seven to ten dollars.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
I have a question about emergency services. I'm concerned that we're not sufficiently funding our emergency services, especially since the acquisition of ambulances by the county. Could you speak to how impact fees interplay with funding for vehicles? I see here that we're funding mortgage payments on facilities, but we, we do have a, a change in circumstances since our last, uh, fee study, and I'm wondering if you could speak to the laws and regulations that constrain the county government.
In the last study, uh, it was determined that we weren't collecting impact fees for the mortgage. The consultant, consultant did not know that we owned the building, county itself owned the building. We used to collect the impact fee for fire departments, but it was, uh, then determined by the consultant, misunderstood our situation, that the county doesn't own fire departments, they don't own, they didn't own and operate, they didn't own equipment. And so therefore, we were collecting an impact fee that we shouldn't have been collecting. And so that was removed from the equation and the, it was brought to just be E S A and their assets taken into consideration. And I don't know if it was at that time that we didn't own the ambulances, I don't know why they're not in there. Uh, my take is maybe under the new setup, the county owns the equipment, similar to Parks and Rec, and that in the new study, you would count those assets, and you have capital category that would be for vehicles. You have one for equipment, which can be their, their actual equipment that goes in the vehicles and so forth. And then you have land and buildings, and that's essentially what you have now, it's just one capital category, land and building. And you don't cost recovery. So.
Yeah, it seems to me that, um, this is something that we ought to look into a little bit further and, um, might be something we could remedy quickly. We've had a discussion, Commissioner Jackson brought up that we have underserved communities with, um, ambulances. Uh, we directed, uh, we asked Director Sign to report back to us on that, he's working on that. Uh, and we also had, you know, citizen submitted, uh, documentation about concerns over, uh, ambulance service on the mountain. I'm, I'm concerned that we're insufficiently funding our ambulances, and I wonder if, it seems to me that this might be an opportunity to, um, fairly and appropriately apply a levy, if you will, so that we can increase our funding for emergency services now that we are in a position that we have acquired those ambulances. It's a change in circumstance, and since it's our last impact fee study. I don't know what the appropriate steps would be, uh, but I can just, if you don't have a recommendation, or maybe you do, um, we can, we can ask the county administrator to look into it and have her delegate, uh, some sort of, uh, review.
This probably isn't the place for discussion, but we probably need to sit down sometime and go over impact fees and what they do and don't cover. So you can't use impact fees like to replace existing vehicles for the sheriff or, um, do maintenance on schools, et cetera. It's for new stuff due to new, due to the demand of new growth. So while you could have a category for ambulances, you're buying ambulances that are in addition to the ones you have. So replacing ones you already have would be the responsibility of the E S A and the county commission through other funding outside impact fees. So you have five ambulances now, and you collect enough money to buy a new one, you're at the point where growth has said you need, now need to have a sixth ambulance. And you, that's when we talk about level of service, that's the level of service that's demanded and that you're providing, and you're expected to maintain that. So once you've spent those initial impact fees to provide for that capital purchase, it's up to the county to now fund in the future all six ambulances, with the replacement of all six of them. We probably should have that discussion outside of here of how it works. But if you wanted to start collecting for vehicles and equipment, I believe that what you need to do is have the consultant do another study based on the assets that you own, and he will determine what the fee amount needs to be, and you would adopt that fee. If that's something you're looking at, like here in the next year, we might want to fund that study and do it, then the question becomes, do you want to just do E S A, or do you want to just go ahead and do everybody early?
Right.
All the entities, and, uh, schools has always paid in recent years in studies. They've paid their cost, which is twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars they've paid for theirs. So you would be doing, uh, admin facilities, um, E S A, parks and rec.
Law enforcement.
And law enforcement, you'd be doing, do a study for that, to see if they need increase or where you are. Or you could just do, you could just do, uh, E S A, and then you hang on to two thousand twenty-six and then just do a long, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks. I, I think the report back from Director Sign on level of service and where are our underserved communities will inform this discussion based on what you've just outlined. I look forward to that.
Yeah, but I can tell you that to do the study, you don't need any report back. All you need to know is that as growth comes in, there's a demand for additional services, and that if you want to add that capital category, and you just need to have consultant determine what that fee amount should be, so that you're not charging more than you should be.
Thank you.
Gets into constitution and taxes, et cetera.
And it's probably worth having, not, not just on ambulances, but if we're in a position as a growing county where we need to move to pay fire, that would be something worth having the discussion and how we would do that and sustain that. For future growth.
Yeah, if you're serious about it, like we have a discussion, you're serious that you want to take a look at it, that's probably a time where we probably need to get the consultant in, uh, have him come up, at least like maybe for half a day, and just sit down and talk about what your, what your thoughts are, and then how this whole thing would play out and what direction to go. He, he gets into stuff that's beyond where I am, because he's, he's figuring out what the, uh, costs are for new growth, and then he's finding nexus between or correlations between whether it's students for school or, um, the number responses and et cetera, the sheriff's department, he's trying to make links in order to parse out how you're going to charge, charge these fees in the basis is. And that gets, it's all economic analysis, they're economists, and so it's, it's, it's outside my realm. I just generally understand. So we should have that coming, that's my point.
Yeah, we should, um, because I'm just curious if, I know the fire departments are asking, the volunteer fire departments are asking this body to consider this levy. If there's other sources we could, or other tools we could use to help. I don't know if this is one, that's why I'm asking, um, if there's other resources we could use to help, um, keep them afloat or help them sustain without, or in lieu of a, an additional fee or an additional levy.
And one other point I make with impact fees is that it's not like a steady stream for constant replacement stuff you have, and it never would be, because if, if, uh, uh, economic development picks up and there's a, there's housing increase, commercial increase, then the amount of impact fees you collect is going to increase. If the economy bottom falls out of the economy and there's no demand for houses, then you're going to have a year where maybe you only collect a hundred thousand dollars in impact fees.
It's not something sustainable, but.
Yeah, it reflects your weight with growth.
Right.
And so, um, there's a lot of moving parts to this.
At, at the bare minimum, it would be nice to know.
At the bare minimum, it would be nice to know that now that we own the ambulances, if there, if we can include additional blind item just for that capital.
I believe you can, and even for the equipment that they purchase. But you're going to need the consultant to analyze the assets, the value of them and then determine what the fee should be. And what, what that fee amount should be and then how you're going to charge it to single families, multifamily duplexes. Charge it to commercial if you decide to reinstitute the commercial fee in any way. And he'll figure out how to parse it all out so that it's fair and reasonable. And can stand the test in court if it's chow.
I think, you know, I don't want to hijack this portion of being to talk about one specific topic, but Administrator Benitez, I think you're hearing. From the commission, some interest in talking to the consultant, if you could follow up with us on what our options are, what the budget would be for that session.
Yeah, so would you like, I have it here, is to set up a meeting. Do you want separate meeting on impact fees or do you want just a presentation within your meeting?
And I'm not doing what I've asked you all to do.
I'm open to what the commission wants to do, both of those sound interesting to me.
So, and are you interested in knowing how all impact fees or just how impact fees with regard to fire departments?
Well, I could do my homework on how impact fees work. I do think that change in how the commission and the county government has approached emergency services warrants a. A public discussion about how we're going to potentially change impact fees to address that.
So within these others, do you want to cover schools, law enforcement and Parks and Rec in the impact fee discussion? Or are we going to be specific to?
I was.
I'd say focus on EMS.
I was, I was gonna say emergency services. Because obviously we don't own the fire trucks, we can't collect an impact fee, it's my understanding on that. But now that we do own the ambulances, there might be a potential source that we could use. It might not be much, but it could be something, it would help. And then if we continue to grow, then that, that money will be there. Yep. Do we need them?
I was gonna ask that, do you want a motion or can we just pursue this?
Do you want this to be as part of your next meeting or would you like, I'll need a motion if you want to set it up as its own meeting to set up that meeting in a time.
We'll just let you handle. Follow me either way.
All right, so next meeting at six thirty.
There you find her. All right, thank you.
Okay. So we're going to continue on to page twenty two, which is the table for the inflation adjustment amounts. If you do. Approve the inflation adjustment effective April one, twenty twenty four. The impact fee for residential for single family townhome duplex is going to increase from seventeen twenty five to one thousand nine forty four. For multifamily, it would be one thousand two thirty four to one thousand three ninety two.
And then you were going to do this page.
Yeah, the next page is, is part of. Resetting the impact fees, this happens annually, it's the state code requires an affordable housing discount. And this is the new fee schedule of take effect, it's tied to the housing index. From the state tax office, tax commissioner. And it's based on assessment data, he puts out a report every year. So what we're saying is that. For simple family townhome duplex. In order to qualify for the affordable housing discount, you would have to be at sixty percent or less. Of the average appraised value of a house in Jefferson County, which is three hundred sixty six thousand, hundred twenty three dollars. For this coming year. For multifamily like these apartment complexes and so forth. You would have to be at forty percent of that figure. The appraiser determines the value of each of those units, apartment units. And they would have to average out at forty percent of that figure of three hundred sixty six thousand dollars. That's all been set by the county commission in the past. So this would be the new affordable housing discount fee schedule and qualification schedule. Based on the new figures provided by the tax commissioner. And then I'll just sidebar here, just so you know, Jefferson County has the highest average appraised value in the state. At three hundred sixty six thousand, which is two and a half times the state average. It's followed by Morgan County. Berkeley County, Hampshire County, and then Montezag County. The state average is a hundred and forty seven thousand. And then you have. Next, next to the lowest county is Webster, it's sixty two thousand. So it's at forty three percent of the state average. And the lowest is McDowell County at twenty seven thousand, which is twenty percent of the state average.
Yes, we, we wonder why we can't get locality pay here for our teachers.
Yeah, and so another way to look at it from the building industry side. The average value per square foot, cost per square foot. For housing in Jefferson County is a hundred and twenty three dollars per square foot. And then Berkeley is second at a hundred and six. And Morgan is fourth at ninety dollars.
This figure, cost per square foot, could you explain a little bit further, what costs are we talking about?
Thousand square foot house would be a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. Yeah. So, and the state average is sixty dollars a square foot. So Jefferson County is double the state average. Just some interesting facts. So anyways, that, that, that's the new fee schedule there, that happens automatically. And so Michelle has, I think, a couple motions for you to consider.
Yes, motion number one is to accept the calendar year twenty twenty three impact fee annual report. Of the impact fees as presented with the correction of the no refunds. For twenty twenty three that I caught after I already sent out the report. I do apologize for that. And then the second motion is to approve or stay the annual inflationary adjustment to the impact fees. Which would take effect on April one, two thousand twenty four.
All right, I move a motion to accept the calendar year twenty twenty three impact fee annual report for the Office of Impact Fee as presented.
A second?
Any discussion?
The point of word, do we need to repeat her typographical error correction?
Correcting the typographical error, that, that, but there are no, there were.
No refunds.
No refunds, I'll add that to my motion.
Thank you.
All right. All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries five zero. And.
Mr. President, I've moved to approve the annual inflationary adjustments to the impact fees.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries five zero.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I have another motion that I'd like to put on the floor and hope I get a second so we can discuss it. This is an item near and dear to my heart. I move to reinstate full impact fees for schools effective April one, twenty twenty four.
Second, we have a motion and a second. To, to reinstate the full, and when you say full, how much would that be?
I don't know. I just want them to be at the, the, the most effective level.
I don't, I don't remember what they were.
I don't either, but it's at a pitiful one dollar, so. But I have a second, so I'm going to make some points.
Okay.
If I could, even though we don't have the final figure for the full school impact fee. We did have a sixty six percent increase in new residential permits. And I'm sure there are children in those buildings. You know, it's, it's pretty pitiful. That the totals are so low for the collections for schools. It's just down to, you know. Well, so far in twenty four, three hundred and eighty five dollars, not much at all.
They do get a lot of federal funding and I do have a quick question about, does that include private schools and charter schools and micro schools?
About the school impact fee and I'd like to finish making my comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished, I apologize.
You know, there are current school building projects which include impact fee funding. Ranson Elementary, thirty three million, Shepherdstown Elementary School, thirty three plus million. The Washington High School Auxiliary Gym, it's over five million. And these, at least the schools, once they're be built, are calculated to be at eighty five percent capacity or more the first year of occupancy. So they are definitely playing catch up. And, you know, it's new standards and new growth that are fueling these needs. They need a new middle school. And there's also a need for, it's called the Special Needs Opportunity Learning Center. Where kids normally are sent that can't function in a normal classroom. Unfortunately, they can't handle elementary students there. So that's an issue and I've seen it in the elementary schools. They spend a lot of time, you know, trying to work with individual students. And further. You know, I know there's a lot of. Negativity toward public schools and I would say I don't think any public school system is perfect. And there's always room for important improvement. But in their real life, in the community, the public schools serve as our community centers. We have a lot of public forums and gatherings. They provide sports band and other extracurricular activities, not only for public students. But for charter, homeschool and private school students at no cost. Some people forget those added benefits of public school. And what I think would be a wonderful idea if we could ever get there. To have childcare facilities at schools. So parents could, you know, if they have to be to work at eight and their kids don't catch the bus till eight fifteen. They could take your kids to school and be in child, supervised childcare and the parents could get to work on time. Same thing on pickup in the evening. That's my idea. But I really, you know, all my kids went here, I have grandkids in the public school systems. And I think we need to provide the support that is necessary. In addition to state funding and federal funding to make sure our facilities are adequate and safe. So. I welcome discussion.
Thank you, I apologize for interrupting earlier, I didn't know that you weren't finished. I apologize, I do need to work on that. The, the comment that I'll say, and then a question is. Like you mentioned, the public schools do get a great deal of, of funding from the federal government and from the state. My question is, do, does that, you could tell me, does that, sorry. You said, oh dear, Tess. Does that go, does that money go to public schools or charter schools or any of the micro schools popping up? Or does it just go to public schools? Impact fees.
Impact fees go just to what has been put on the capital improvement plan.
Okay, and I'm sorry, is that just public schools?
Yes.
Yes.
Because the fee is based only on the assets of public schools.
Yes. Okay, and am I correct that they do get money from levies, the, the public schools here in this county? Or is that just Berkeley? I can't, I can't recall.
We don't, we don't get into that.
Okay, I just, if you knew, you knew.
Yeah, it's, I think it's, might be important. Again, if you could indicate what the impact fees are used for in relation to the schools.
Yeah.
We were going to get into that.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry. Just for clarity.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry if I jumped the gun, but I wanted to make sure, well, motions were on the floor, I got my matter on for discussion, so.
Is, is staff mentioned a little bit, a little bit ago that we have to figure out what the fees, how much we can charge. We just can't pull a number out and just put in, plug in. I think that's why we're going to get more clarification on emergency services. It was my understanding that, that the fees for the schools were taken down to one dollar so we can increase them at another time. It's, there was just a recent newspaper article and you can look at it, look at the numbers on the. West Virginia Department of Education website as well too, that, and I'm, I didn't have, I don't have it saved on my computer, but I can dig it up and send it to everybody. But if I recall correctly, the, our pop, student population enrollment has dropped roughly a thousand children. In the last seven or eight years, I believe. And they, they dropped again last year a couple hundred. And I'm not real sure that we can legally collect an impact fee for our schools. Because right now they're at a declining enrollment.
I, I understand that point and I've seen the figures too, but I do believe that. There are always additional requirements coming from wherever, the state or feds, of what you have to provide for kids.
Sure.
And I think we need to do our level best to provide that, but it would, you know, we would have to have. The expert look at the, the numbers and, or the data and, and figure out what the fee could be. I mean. The max fee and, you know, I know you guys know, can find out what the fee was. So we could use that as a basis to start off with.
Sure.
To reinstate the fee.
We were going to ask the experts to come up with a, to, to, right, I'm assuming I was right. Ask experts about emergency services fee and what we can or cannot charge. I wouldn't have a problem including that conversation with having this discussion with them about schools as well. Because I don't know what that number would be. And I think if we pull a number out of the air and just say, plug it in. If, like you said, all this stuff has to hold up in court. And if we get sued and, or, or the, somebody will. Yeah.
I, I just want to know what the timeline is because I have a timeline to support this effort.
Sure.
And I don't know how long it'll take to have a specialist work on the fees.
You, were you just asking to reinstate to what it was before it went down to a dollar?
I would like to start there.
That information.
Yeah.
We didn't come prepared to talk about what the fee schedule history was. But reinstating it to what it was prior to being reduced to a dollar, we can, we can go back in the records and figure that out.
Yeah.
We just can't tell you what the fee is, there's been fee calculations over the years and determinations of what fee should be. And then one time, County Commission decided to adopt the fee at seventy percent of what was calculated. So the fees have jumped around, so if you're asking us what the fee is or should be, we just don't have that right here.
Okay, well, could I come to the next meeting and?
That's what I was gonna say, someone always draw your motion until.
I will table my motion till the next meeting.
All right.
So I expect it to be on the agenda at the next meeting.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll do that.
A point of word, I think there should be a motion to table and then we could vote on that.
Yes.
That's all right.
Okay. Move to table my motion for the next meeting.
Oh, seconds.
Oh, I'm, any discussion, all in favor?
Actually, I didn't get to talk about the underlying issue, so I'll just make a statement now, we can get back to, we're gonna vote yes on tabling as you suggested. But I think impact fees are about fairness to the taxpayer. We continuously fund capital projects through impact fees to avoid boom and bust cycles as we're, as we have major. Capital expenditures like sixty five million dollar buildings. So, you know, in a hypothetical scenario, instead of having the burden placed on the community in, in twenty forty two. To build a hundred twenty million dollar building, we collect a little bit at a time through impact fees. I think it's. I think it's appropriate and I think it's fair for taxpayers without even getting into the merits of particular projects. I just think it's a good system. So I, I look forward to having that discussion, I'll vote to table so we can get more information, but thanks for bringing it up.
All right, any for this, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody post, most carries five zero. Right, there you go.
Okay. Sorry, I threw you guys curveballs. No.
Okay, I'm gonna do the this year twenty twenty five capital improvement plan for impact fee. Pursuant to West Virginia State Code, Chapter Seven, Article Twenty, Section Six, counties which have been, have enabled impact fees must maintain an impact fee program capital improvement plan. Only the projects listed in this CIP are eligible for funding by impact fees, either in whole or in part. Whether a project may be wholly or only partially funded depends on whether the project is exclusively needed due to new growth or is only partially required due to conditions of new growth. The requirement for yearly impact fee capital improvement plan, the identification of impact fee fundable projects is outlined in Jefferson County Impact Fee Procedures Ordinance two thousand and three dash one, Section Three C. Presentation of the capital improvement plan traditionally follows out of the annual report for the Office of Impact Fees. The majority of all governments present their upcoming CIP prior to the budget process due to the possible impact of capital projects on the county's general fund or capital outlay fund. Several impact fee funded projects submitted for FY twenty twenty five will require additional funding from other sources. The mortgage payment for EMS headquarters facility require partial payment from the department's budget. That was until the most recent number, and we think we have enough to cover it this coming year.
Yes, sir.
Request. Parks and Recreation's James Height Park pickleball courts playground equipment, septic system upgrades will be partially funded by under other funding sources available to them. The projects recommended for FY twenty twenty five impact fee funding are presented in this CIP report. Jefferson County School Board has pretty much exhausted most of its impact fee funds with its already approved FY twenty three and FY twenty four CIP requests. Therefore, they have no CIP funding requests for FY twenty five. Almost all their funds in their impact fee bank account are already allocated towards these prior group projects. So. This document constitutes Jefferson County Impact Fee Program Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year twenty twenty five, which begins July one, twenty twenty four. It consists of two categories. Those eligible for impact fee funding for capital improvements and those ineligible. For entities eligible for impact fee funding, they are schools, law enforcement, parks and recreation, EMS, and administrative facilities. The total funding request for all projects over the upcoming fiscal year as well as the next five outlying years is one hundred and eighty eight million, seventy two thousand, one hundred dollars, which is down from one hundred ninety one million in FY twenty four. Of this amount, three million, two hundred fifty one thousand represents the funding request for fiscal year twenty twenty five. The divided sections, which in the back, there's a divider number one. All those forms in the back are the paperwork that each entity submits to Michelle for their CIP requests, which she processes and organizes into this CIP plan. So they submit CIP Form One and CIP Form Two. Form two B, Budget Impact Analysis, is a form they submit. However, the projects submitted for FY twenty five do not require funding from the counties, counties general or capital outlet funds. Like Parks and Rec, they're getting their additional funding sources like from grant funds and so forth. This document lists planned capital projects within the Jefferson County Impact Fee Program, of which some entities have several options for funding available to them. Revenue is available, fund capital projects may be classified into one of the following categories. You have direct county support. The county commission has the authority to use companies from the general whole severance fund to assist with funding county projects. In prior years, these funds have been used to build the San Michael's Park Community Center and purchase and renovate several buildings, which includes emergency communications center, the sheriff's department, and the county maintenance facility. The old jail was renovated for the circuit court, and most recently, the purchase and renovation of the gray building, which now houses prosecuting attorney's office. These funds have also assisted with mortgage payments for the new ESA building. Only the county commission board of education, they propose special liabilities to fund capital projects, which is another source of funding. The Board of Education has floated several construction bonds which are funding expansion or renovation projects at Jefferson High School, Washington High School. County Commission, the county commission may borrow money from any type of lending, financial institution, or issue general obligation bonds. You have state support. The only significant source of state supply capital funding for the county comes from the state, state school building authority. This entity sets school construction standards and releases funds generally for entities that bring significant cash matches, which it seems from our observation, the school uses impact fees as a match with the school building authority. In the past few funding cycles, Jefferson County Board of Education has used collected impact fee monies as monetary match. Federal support, federal monies have not been a predictable or reliable revenue stream to fund capital projects within Jefferson County, although the sheriff's department has received some federal monies. Next are the impact fee fundable projects. We have three tables. Table one are what we call their priority one projects, or the projects that each entity would consider mandatory or urgent. And table one on page thirteen, you will see that school board and ESA have mandatory or urgent projects, and no other entity provided any mandatory or urgent projects in their CIP submission. Table two, this is all urgent and non-urgent. This is each entity's, you have to start on page six. That, this is their overall wish list, whether it's impact fee funding or other sources. And you would see that the Board of Education has a hundred and forty seven million dollar wish list. Sheriff has a nine point six million dollar wish list. Parks and Recreation has a ten million dollar wish list. And ESA right now just has five hundred and twenty thousand. And administrative facilities, we can collect up to and reimburse ourselves for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And table three are those projects that have, only those projects identified that are impact fee fundable, whether in whole or partially. Table three on page eight. Start with schools. They've got prior allocations. And they have no current request. None of their funds at this point are pretty much expended or allocated prior, prior CIP plan year requests. The sheriff of Jefferson County is asking currently in this CIP for a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. The first projects of weapons training qualifications range. Full funding is currently available in the law enforcement account for this twenty five thousand dollar request on this individual request. In fiscal year twenty twenty five, the CIP impact fees funding request through FY twenty thirty is seventy five thousand. And it's currently available, which will complete this funding request for this item. Next one is an internal expansion of temporary sheriff's office space, which is to make it more efficient and expandable in a sense due to new growth. Full funding is currently available in the law enforcement account for this hundred and fifty thousand dollar request in the fiscal year twenty twenty five. The CIP impact fees funding request to FY twenty thirty is a hundred and fifty thousand is also currently available, which completes this funding request. So those are the two projects they're asking for in this CIP. Parks and Recreation, they're asking for a total of seven hundred and ninety five thousand, first item being San Michael's Park septic upgrades. Full funding is currently available on the Parks and Rec impact fee account for this four hundred and fifty thousand dollar request in fiscal year twenty twenty five. No additional funding request in future fiscal years is indicated, and it appears to be a one-time request for this project. Total cost is being supplemented with three hundred thousand dollars of funding from other sources. South Jefferson Park master plan. Full funding is currently available on the Parks and Rec impact fee account for the seventy five thousand dollar request in twenty twenty five. No additional funding request in future fiscal, fiscal years is indicated, and it appears to be a one-time request for this project. Third item is San Michael's Park Playground. Funding for this project is available on the Parks and Rec impact fee account for the seventy thousand dollar request in fiscal year twenty twenty five. An additional funding request in future fiscal years is indicated, and appears to be a one-time request for this project. The total cost is being supplemented with seventy thousand dollars of funding from other sources. James Height Park Pickleball Courts. Funding for this project is available on the Parks and Rec impact fee account for this two hundred thousand dollar request in fiscal year twenty twenty five. Now additional funding requests in future fiscal years is indicated, and this appears to be a one-time request for this project. The total cost is being supplemented with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding from other sources. That's Parks and Rec's request. Emergency Services. Eighty one thousand dollars for the mortgage. Funding for this project is available on the EMS impact fee account for the full eighty one thousand dollars. However, it appears that there will be insufficient funding in future fiscal years to pay the full eighty one thousand from impact fee funds, since impact fee revenues for this entity have typically averaged only twenty thousand dollars a year. In recent years, the ESA will need to find another funding source, and I'll point out that this has occurred in past years, too, where they didn't have the full eighty one, and they've had to come up with the remaining money from another source.
Before you move on, I think this touches on a couple topics we've talked about already. But we need to have fully funded emergency services. I look forward to working with Director Sign to make sure we do have that funding moving forward. And, and we had talked in a prior meeting about looking at a vehicle replacement plan and folding that into the CIP, so I look forward to receiving that as well, so we can even out those costs over time. And like we were just talking about, we don't have that boom and bust cycle. Thanks.
Next is administrative facilities. Current request in fiscal year twenty twenty five is zero dollars. So we have no current request. Would be not perceived potential request at this time. If you decide between now and the next twenty twenty six fiscal year CIP that you want to withdraw the money that you have in there, you would need to process a FY twenty twenty five CIP amendment. That way, you change that figure to whatever you want it to be. And then you would be able to submit a requisition and have the money withdrawn and put into your general fund. And of course, I would expect you would look to us to handle all that paperwork.
I'd gladly do it, yeah.
So we've got it sitting at zero right now. Until somebody tells us what they want to do with it and request it to be drawn. Paid out. So. Pursuant to West Virginia State Code, Chapter Seven, Article Twenty, Section Six, counties which have enabled an impact, impact fees must maintain an impact fee program capital improvement plan. Only the projects listed in this plan are eligible for funding by impact fees, either in whole or in part. The role of the impact fee program specialists identify the projects from the impact fee program capital improvement plan, which are eligible for funding. And this is done for each capital category for each entity which impact fees are collected. The process she goes through is, does the project represent expansion of acknowledged capital category? And if the answer is no, then impact fees don't apply. If the answer is yes, the project is eligible. And then the second decision is made, is it totally due to new growth or only partially due to new growth? The answer is yes, it's fully impact fee fundable, and if no, it's only partially fundable. In cases where a project may be funded using impact fees, the impact fee program specialists examine the current cash flow analysis to determine how much in collected funds is attributed to the relevant capital category that, for example, is schools, land, buildings, equipment, vehicles. The cash flow analysis also tracks speed dispersment over time, so it's a useful tool for providing guidance on overall spending trends. And the cash flow analysis for these few categories are presented in the following pages. And what we run behind the scenes, we, we have a spreadsheet that has many tabs. That is the continuing and historical accounting of fees collected for each entity. What each of those entities requisitions are in the capital category that, that, that money is allocated to. So we keep that running tally and then.
That's not in the packet, right?
Pardon? No.
No, okay.
No, this is in our system.
It's in, it's internal.
Okay.
And then what we do is we make a projection, because this plan doesn't come into effect until July one, twenty twenty four. We know what amount of fees we've collected to date through summer thirty first of twenty three, and the question becomes, what do we think we're going to collect in the next six months? Because that affects our decision on whether or not we think something will be fundable in the FY twenty five plan. So we make it, we go back and look at the history of what development occurred and impact fees were paid in the prior years, first six months. And then we make an assumption of whether we think it will be the same, it'll increase or decrease. And in any case, how much? And so we've said that we, we expected to remain the same. That's our guess, best guess at this point. So we can, we can estimate the amount of fees that will be collected. We add that to what we've already collected to date, and then we can calculate where we will be on July one. And that's the whole process that we go through here. So we do that for, so we, we assume that it would be the same, and that equates to a hundred ninety eight single family units in the first six months of twenty twenty four, a hundred ninety one townhouse units, and two duplex units. We believe that that's what we will see. Based on that, we calculate what the additional fees will be that will be collected in the next coming six months. And we have these tables or spreadsheets in the back, actual analysis. And the upper block is what they currently have on December thirty first. And then we add the additional funds we believe will collect, and we believe that schools will have sitting in their account two million, five thousand dollars. The law enforcement will have seven hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars on July one, twenty twenty four. Parks and Rec will have one million, six hundred and fifty nine thousand. Emergency Services will have a hundred and twenty nine thousand. And we said at the time we did this, which has been a while back, we thought that administrative facilities will have seventy seven thousand dollars. Currently have sixty one.
Correct.
So it's grown since we.
Yeah, okay.
So that's where we are. That's how we, those are the figures we use to determine whether or not something is fundable in the tables presented earlier. So we believe the money is going to be there, and and this is our plan, and we're recommending adoption of it. And so we have a motion back on the agenda request to approve the twenty twenty five capital improvement plan for the Office of Impact Fees.
Question?
Yeah.
Will that, if we adopt it as it is now, will that permit these education thing to come back?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, yeah, I just want to make sure.
I understand your question. If you were to increase the school impact fee during the coming year, and schools wanted to fund things that they, they, they're not able to fund right now, we would do a, an amendment to the capital improvement plan, which has occurred several times.
Yes.
So we brought in, presented to you to amend this capital improvement plan to add that item at this amount of money.
Okay, that's, I wanted to make sure before we, yeah.
Well, and just sort of like the county commission, if we want to use any admin things, we would. Well, and just sort of like the county commission, if we want to use any admin things, we would have to apply or amend a CIP. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Have I confused you enough?
That's a lot of data.
So County Minister Benitez, one thing I'd like to see moving forward is if we could have a discussion about long-term planning from each of the departments, or at least the ones that are included in the CIP. It's not on Mr. Goodman, but so we can look at what our non-binding projected capital expenditures would be five years from now, 10 years from now, et cetera. These, these can be pretty major projects, so they're not, they're not thought of on a whim. That way we'll have a better understanding of what we want to spend in this cycle and what's coming down the pike.
Want it for?
Doesn't have to be for this year, but.
For the CIP?
Right, for the CIP, right. The, the long-term spending.
Not from every department.
Just those that are included in the CIP, right? I think that'll be helpful for the commission to see what's coming down the road and to plan appropriately.
All right, I'll move to approve the FY 2025 capital agreement plan for the Office of Impact Fee as presented.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose, most carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, no, we're going to drag you back.
Yeah, yeah. If we have an amendment, obviously we'll be back.
Right, yeah.
All right, we're going to move on to gen item number nine. Betsy Nelson, Budget Director.
I did limit myself to two cups of coffee this morning, so I wouldn't talk too fast.
Thank you.
This is the revised schedule. I had a first question yesterday, it was a conflict of interest with one of our commissioners, so we just had to make a quick adjustment. It's high light, it's yellow.
Did you mean to say schedule conflict? I think you said conflict of interest.
Oh, schedule conflict.
Okay. Let's get that on the record.
Okay. I also have Charlie Hyman. She's with Cox Holiday Young. Can you all hear me on the mic?
I can hear you. Well, I don't know if the recording hears you well enough without using the mic. Yeah.
So she is, she is the accountant who has prepared the, the budget charge memo. And it, that was in your packet, so I wasn't going to go through and read the entire memo. I was just going to hit some highlights on that. First of all, I just handed you the budget process schedule and all budget requests are due to me by Friday, February 9. And the tentative dates for the presentation schedule are February 26th, 27th, and 28th. And that schedule will be coming out next week with all the outside agencies and the different departments and things like that. Our expectations for this year, we are starting with a flat budget using the approved FY '24 budget as starting point. Any new initiatives shall be presented with justification and additional backup during the presentations. And our number one goal is to achieve a balanced budget that reflects the needs of the county while being frugal with the taxpayers' money. Regards to the tax levy rate, the preliminary numbers indicate the levy rate may increase 2% to 4% in FY '25. The county is permitted to increase the levy rate without a public hearing if it is under 1%. So I'm going to have to work with Andy Banks closely to figure that out. And, and we may have to have a public hearing on that. The property tax revenues could increase 5% to 8% of our FY '24. The property transfer tax remains steady with FY '24 at 1.8 million. Video lottery revenue increase, it's estimated an increase of 2% for the year. The table gaming revenues estimated at 1%. And that is conservative because I think there's, the gambling industry may still be experiencing a little bit of the COVID backlash. And I do believe they're getting ready to open another casino, I think in Virginia. And I think Maryland could sort of hit our tables a little bit. I don't know, I'm not a gambler.
Yeah, well, at least it's not going down as it has. At least holding steady.
It's, it's steady, it's not, we're not decreasing. I think we saw a decrease in 2020 and 2021, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and, yeah, it was dip.
Medical insurance expense, the broker has estimated the medical insurance to, for our employees will only increase by 9% this year. Those final figures have not been released yet. And that does include our ESA employees for an approximate increase of $367, excuse me, $362,000 for this year, upcoming year. In FY '24, the county did not increase the employees portion, they absorbed that. I would have recommended the commission resume increasing and sharing that cost with the employees as well as the county splitting that cost. Once we have the figures, we can sort of figure that out.
Because 9% is the chunk, really.
It's high. Um, apparently what she mentioned is that we had a lot of high claims this year that's going to impact our increase.
Well, and I don't, I'm not saying it's ESA, but I mean, adding them to the thing. I mean, there can be more potential work-related problems.
Right. And, and while we're talking about the medical insurance, and I don't have this noted, obviously it's not in part of the budget charge. But I believe when Mr. Nissel was here, there was, he and Ms. Resmer were discussing offering the ESA insurance policies or coverage that the ESA employees have to the county employees and opening it up, giving the employees a choice between the two different plans.
Oh, okay.
And I, it didn't get anywhere, so that may be something we want to take a look at before May.
Right.
Before we start our open enrollment. It looks like the ESA premiums are lower, but I don't know what their coverage is.
Right, right. It may just cover work.
They take the demographic.
Yes, right, you're right.
Age of those on the plan and how frequently it's used to send those.
Apply to senior citizens.
So, so when we move on to the employee salaries. For the merit increase, I am recommending an increase of a merit increase based on employee performance up to a maximum 5%. According to our policy 217, the annual performance appraisal, and that's where the, the department head would have to conduct an evaluation of the employee if they exceed and do their scaling. But it's not a guaranteed 5% increase for all employees. It is definitely performance-based at the discretion of the elected official or the department head.
And Betsy, when you get a chance, can we just get a copy of that policy 217?
Yeah.
If you, you can just email it to us.
Okay.
So we have that. Please.
There were no merit increases approved by the commission during the budget process. However, there have been some individual merit increases awarded throughout the year. Some have been approved by the county commission, some have been executed using existing funds in the personnel budgets. From vacancies. So that's.
They just reallocated funds from vacancy.
So that's something I think that we'll discuss more when we get into the budget 101, when we get into personnel. I'm just, this is just to give an overview right now. But I would highly recommend that commission make a decision on doing merit increases and getting that approved during the budget process so that we know ahead of time and we're ahead of the game before someone has to come back to the county commission at a later date to request a potential merit increase. I am also recommending one of two scenarios. To do the merit increases, again, up to a maximum effective July 1 for all county employees, full-time employees, or which would be a cost of $850,000 increase over our current FY '24 budget. Or make them effective January 1 of, that's of 2025 for a $425,000 increase. Either scenario, if, if increase is done on any date other than the anniversary date, we would have to revise policy 204 because it states that all increases are done, awarded on the anniversary date. And we, we are, as Eddie has come on board and, and we've been discussing a lot about policies. A lot of our policies need to be revised, reviewed, and updated. So we want to be consistent to protect the liability of the county that we're consistently applying our policies across the board in all areas.
Nancy, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
My numbers are different than what you just said. Hold on. For, let's see, bear with me, I'm sorry, I lost my spot. Under scenario one, merit increase of 5% at July 1 increases salaries and wages. I have 715, but I think you gave a different number. Was that eight? Did I, did I, am I looking at the wrong thing?
On the merit increase, 715, but you will also have to take into account the retirement and the payroll taxes.
Okay.
So that included in my, in my overall total.
Would you please tell me that number again?
Further down on that paragraph that you're looking at a merit increases, you'll see the 715.
Yes.
Then you'll see 358.
Yes, ma'am.
And the 55 and 80.
And 80, gotcha.
So that will tie into your 715.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then the 358, 28 and 40 would tie in for the second scenario.
Thank you very much.
Could you repeat the totals, please? Eight something?
It was 850 and 425, 420, 425, 426 because of rounding.
Thank you.
Yes. I mentioned we would have to revise that policy 204. I would recommend, and I did, when I came from Loudoun County, we would do our cost of living at the beginning of the fiscal year and then six months later, they would do the merit increases. That allows the department heads and the managers time to get out of the whole budget process, take some time and give a, a very strong evaluation for their employees. And if everything is due at the same time every year, it gives the manager easier planning tools. And we don't have to, we ran into problems in the past with retro pay and so forgetting to get it done and things like that. So that's my recommendation. Obviously, you can make your decision during the budget process.
So, and I will say that when Betsy and I talked about this, FY '24 did not include a line item increase for merit pay, but our policies provide it and the commission approved it. So if under practice and policy we're having merit increases, it's only good government practice then to ensure that it's in your budget. And so that's why Betsy has brought it forward, ensuring that that's covered in the budget.
So we're budgeting for something that we've already approved? Is that what you're saying?
In two different ways, one is a policy and one is a practice.
Right, okay.
A dollar figure was not approved.
Thank you.
So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, what seems to have happened because the county did not give merit increases last year. We just did a flat COLA across the board to everybody, trying to figure out and ensure that merits were being given based on performance. But it seems that we have some departments that had vacancies, which means they had extra money. So they gave merit increases anyway. And other departments that didn't have that luxury of extra money laying around because maybe they didn't have the vacancy or wasn't backfilling someone, didn't have the luxury of doing that. Yeah, that's a little bit of an issue, issue.
These are, I mean, these are things that we really do need to sit down and talk about.
We gotta iron it out so that it's fair and equitable.
And that, that just raises to me the, the need for an HR lead in the county, which I've heard. I did a tour of the different departments last week, was it last week, I think? And that is a need that I heard from all the department heads. So, and I, I think it would apply here as well.
Continue, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to, because I know we're on time constraints and I know you have another meeting at 1:30. So I'm trying to go as quickly as possible without talking like the Road Runner. So, but I am recommending a 2.5% increase for COLA effective July 1. The Consumer Price Index, which has put up a Bureau of Labor Statistics, is 2.6 this year. And it's a way for the government to measure inflation. Social Security implemented a 3.2 increase. And West Virginia, the state of West Virginia has proposed a 5%, COLA increase for all of their employees, but that has not passed at this point.
I hope it does for state employees, they've suffered a long time. Low wages.
So anyway, so to support my request or my suggestions for merit and COLA increase, I think providing a merit increase and a COLA increase would boost employee morale and encourage retention. We're competing with neighboring counties with competitive salaries. We're losing quality people and we're having a hard time getting quality people coming in. Thus far in FY '24, 23 employees have terminated, not necessarily dismissal, quitting, retirement. Lost 23 employees. And in FY '23, we had a 20% turnover in the entire staff excluding ESA. Historically speaking, FY '22, we had no merit or COLA increase. We were in the midst of the COLA, the COVID crisis, but we did receive stipments. And FY '23, there was a 4% merit and a 2.5% COLA. FY '24, no merit with a 5% COLA. And the deputies received an additional 10% adjustment to get them boosted up to be more equitable for them for retention.
Okay.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you very much.
I just, I have a request. So I know you're doing elected officials to return their budgets. I'm assuming that's including their budget requests. That's including the ancillary departments like community ministries, JCD.
Yes, everyone.
All those. So what I would have a request is from, from those departments, Department of Health, JCD. Community Ministries, Parks and Rec is kind of a full disclosure of their budget. Um, including any contributions made or any money given to them from the county. So I'm going to use community ministries, just for instance. I know we, I think we budgeted for them or gave them $80,000 last year's budget cycle. That might have been from ARPA, but we just gave them $70,000 from ARPA. So I'd like to see what the county's contributing to their budgets and the need. I'd like to see a full disclosure of their expenses so they can justify why they're asking the county to give them, you know, additional funds of taxpayer money.
Are you asking also for all, all forms of revenue?
Pretty much, yes. I mean, if they're disclosing their budget to us, all forms of revenue, if they're getting grants and all that. Just like to know, we keep getting the ask in random ask. And yeah, we want to help and we want to keep the community running and everything, but why there needs to be an ask. So I'd just like to see a complete picture of those finances to be included in with whatever they're asking for, for fiscal year 25.
All outside agencies.
Yeah. We get that from you, from everybody else, so all outside agencies.
What I would like to recommend is from any agencies, department heads or elects, to not include the COLA or the merit in their request because it's, it's nice to look that as, at that as a whole. Because then when they send it in, then we have to take it back out because we kind of look at this, the mayor and the COLA as a whole, not necessarily per department. So it'd be nice if they could submit the request, leaving those out.
Right, right.
I think we've done that the past few years, right? The county's just allocated.
I think that's been put in 401 and when you make a decision, then that money's moved from 401 and allocated to the.
It's, it's very confusing trying to figure it all backwards, which has happened some in the past.
And you had mentioned, you brought up table game funding. And years ago, when we had table games and then their video lottery, that money was put into general funds. We've been trying to wean, we've been trying to put that money into capital because, so we don't take a hit. And it looks like we're going to take a hit real soon. There's been a lot of chatter with this new casino going in and our, some type of gambling establishment in Fairfax County. They're trying to figure out the location now. It could be as close as Tyson's Corner. The last time we took a big hit, we had to reduce departments' budgets by 10%. And some people lost, we had, we had to, we had to do away with a couple of positions. I do know we lost the agriculture position at the JCD at that time. So I would just, just mention that it'd be nice if we could just say that, keep that in mind during the budget season. And, and hopefully we can try to move some more of our video lottery revenue and, and our table game revenue into capital so we won't take a hit again like we did last time.
Well, and originally video lottery and the other fund from gambling, that's what funded the ambulance authority when we first started it. I mean, we couldn't have done it otherwise. But of course, that whole scenario has changed, but that's, that's the way we started it. We didn't have enough revenue in, in county budget to do it. So it just shows you, you know, is it, it was going up and now it's teetering off to small, small amount.
Yeah, because it, it looks like this is coming. So we should, we, and the MGM, we took a hit and then the, the one in, in Ronald County, we took a big hit too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, and you know, we, we made the decision to put that money into capital. We need to keep it that way and not fund positions with it.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to gen item number 10, Nathan. And Nathan, we are on time restraint, I'll just remind you.
I understand. I will have to inform you that I have a couple of items that will be fairly lengthy. So we may have to reconvene after the bore.
Okay.
I'm afraid that I, I'm going to have to head out from the Board of Equalization at 2:15. I'm afraid that I, I'm going to have to head out from the Board of Equalization at two fifteen at the latest to pick my children up from school. I'm very sorry about that.
Yeah.
Does that?
I think that would still leave us with a, a quorum, so, um, but that would be up to you all, what you do. But right now, I know you want to get out of here. But our counsel for the opioid litigation is here and he needs to give you some information. It will have to be an executive session. And he has informed me that he thinks he can do it in ten minutes.
All right.
So.
That's if we ask no questions.
Is that, is that?
Is that okay? Can we just do that and then? I mean, I'm, I'm fine to keep going, but.
Is that the only one you need to go into executive session?
No.
No, okay. What, what other ones you need to go into executive session for?
My, my letter.
Come out.
My letter D, um, this minor boundary issue.
Okay.
Um, I believe there's an issue in my letter E about, uh, property.
Okay.
And then, um, I think those two things would need to be also an executive session.
D.
D and E.
D, E and A.
Yes.
I don't have an E. All right. All right, I'll move to, we go into exec, executive session to receive.
I'm so sorry, ma'am, interrupt before your motion, I do apologize.
Sure, go ahead.
I couldn't squeeze that in there. I did have a question about the document that you emailed to us, which was, um, uh, what am I looking for? We have to keep mum on that. Um, my question is, we do have a constituent asking about that. She sent an email to the commission about why can't the public see that document? And I wanted to say out loud, why can't the public see this document?
Okay, um, and I can just deal with that real quickly. That would be my item B, report on the advisory opinion. Um, first, I sent the advisory, uh, request for an advisory opinion to the Ethics Commission. And I, uh, received a communication from them this morning, from the staff. Now, it's the staff, not the commission, but the staff of the Ethics Commission. And, uh, if you will recall, when, uh, you directed me to send that to them from you, I, uh, believe that you might not have standing to do that. And the staff person informed me that, uh, they do not believe that you have standing to ask that question, that that question would have to come from the Planning Commission. And second, with regard to, the issue is going to be docketed on the Ethics Commission. Agenda, okay? And that agenda will be. That agenda will be March the seventh, twenty twenty-four. And third, um, that, uh, person also informed me that in a request like this, they consider it to be a public document. So in answer to your question, uh, they have informed me that, that they're going to make that public. Okay.
So my, my question, thank you. My question. Um, what I, the way I understand it, when the constituent reached out to the Ethics Commission to ask the question, they said she could not request that, but that we, the Jefferson County Commission, would have to request that. So how did that happen that we are not a qualified body to request that opinion?
Well, typically, the Ethics Commission, um, only responds to requests from, from the person or entity who is, I mean, I can ask for ethics opinion about me, I can't ask for one about you. That's the easiest way to, to, um, to describe it. And so, uh, and again, that's the staff's opinion, um, but not the.
Well, I guess what, to me, what it comes down to is we appoint the people on the Ethics Commission, right? So doesn't it rest with us?
On the planning.
Planning.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, Planning Commission, listen to what I say, not what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, I didn't make that decision, okay? I didn't make that call, I'm just telling you what they told me. But I suspected that that would be the case because that is, uh, typically how it works. And I'm just saying, you can ask about your own ethics, but you can't ask about other people's ethics.
Right, and I made my own request as an individual commissioner or resident of the county. And I was told I had no standing because I was not a member of the Planning Commission, so.
This would be a good time to reiterate my position that I'm in favor of transparency regardless of the opinion that comes back from the Ethics Commission. I'll certainly read it and be interested in what they have to say, but, um, we can act independently, uh, within the law. And I look forward to discussing this further. All right.
Does that answer your question? I mean, I don't have an answer for your question, other than that's what they told me.
I, I'm unhappy with the answer, but it's an answer.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Skinner is here.
We gotta move into.
I understand.
Before we turn it forward to him. All right, well, move to, we go into exec session for agenda, agenda items A, D and E to receive legal advice from our counsel and our outside counsel. Second, any discussion, do I need to add anything? You.
No, I think you got it all.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, we're, we're in exec session.
That's a loaded question you asked.
Yes, all right, we're ready, we're back in, we're back in open, so let me move a motion to come out executive session. We have a second on favor, say aye. Motion carries five zero, all right, we're back in open session, we have one more item under our legal counsel Nathan Cochran is number F, ten F, if you want to take that up, sir.
The question was the residency of these members. That would be governed by A A eight four and section B one says the members of County Board of Zoning Appeals must be residents of the county for at least three years preceding his or her appointment. There isn't any real clear direction on this, however, I'm following back on the principles of statutory construction. And basically those are, if you're deciding the meaning of the statutory provision, we look first at the statute's language. And if the text given is, when the answer is interpretive question, the language must fail for the inquiry is proposed, meaning for some case law. So it says they have to be residents of the county, and so I think that the city is within the county, so if they live within the municipality, they're still residents of the county, so I think that would be.
Okay, well, it was just something that struck me then when I realized he was not within the county planning and zoning regulations, but he.
We had reappointed him pending this, right?
Yes, I think so.
Mr. Harris.
Did you reappoint him or did we just, I think you just said keep serving.
Well, I said, keep serving until we.
Keep serving till we get a clear, I think, I think the best way to do is have a clear motion now. Because how I'm, how I took that was he's going to consider, continue to serve until we got it. Yeah, so I think it'd be clear to have a, better to have a motion, I think, so, and that moves on to agenda, I remember eleven. Now we have that cleared up, see if someone will make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that reappoints Jacob Harris to the Jefferson County Board of Zoning Appeals for one, three-year term ending January one, twenty twenty seven.
It's been motion in second by Pasha and motion was by Commissioner Jackson, any discussion, all in favor, say aye. Anybody post, motion carries five zero.
No, no.
Oh, you vote no, okay, I'm sorry, sorry, I was, I was moving along.
We might need to start.
Motion is for one, I mean, the, the motion is approved for one, all right, we're going to move on to interim county administrator reports.
First was just an update on, first was just an update on hiring and the total applications received for the county administrator position is twelve and sixty. So you can see that was about a one increase over county administrator and I think thirteen, twelve or thirteen over the deputy county administrator. So gonna, that position closes on the fifth for the deputy and I anticipate starting to review applications pretty soon thereafter. So I've already reached out to Commissioner Tab and to Roger Goodwin to help me review applicants for that position because of their experience. And then the position for the county administrator closes on the sixteenth, and again, Jessica James is spearheading that one. Then with emergency services onboarding, we continued to move through and now we're through to eleven. We're working to try to set up another meeting where we have ESA, myself, legal and HR all at the table, continue to move through those policies. With a TIF lawyer, I.
You said you're up to eleven, what does that refer to?
To eleven, to eleven, so we start, the first HR policy is one oh one, and then the, now we're on to eleven of the HR policies. Then with a TIF lawyer at the last, so just to go back in time, September seventh, the commission asked the county administrator to hire an outside counsel to advise the commission on TIF financing, which is tax increment financing with regard to Hilltop House. And then on the eighteenth of last month, the commission asked that I pull together all of the engagement letters and share them with the commission before hiring anyone and asked for a few extra bits of information, including if the, if anyone had any business before the commission. So I expanded that a little to also include before the commission departments and boards and commissions. So I also did Google searches and just came back from a economic development conference where you have a lot of attorneys that are working on all kinds of economic development financing, like TIF financing, so I asked as many as I could, I sent that list along to you, it's also included here. So I reached out to Jackson and Kelly, Bowles Rice, Frostbound Todd, Spillman, Thomas and Battle. And I've already received, I think, two engagement letters at this point, and so I hope to have it on the next agenda. I'm asking for fees for any experience on TIF, on TIFs and STIFs, which are sales tax increment financing, pilots, which are payment in lieu of taxes, and any other economic development financing programs. And then asking for the firm's representation before the commission departments, boards and commissions.
I just want to share that while we were at the county commission association meeting, there was a gentleman, actually, I think his last name was Stepto, I can't remember names. But he's, it's Cruz and Associates, and he presented some information on TIFs and this kind of financing.
It wasn't John Stumpf with Stepto?
No, no.
His last name was Stepto.
His last name was Stepto, but it's called Cruz and Associates, I did talk to him, he didn't give me his card, I gave him mine. And I haven't heard from him, but um, there's no.
He was on the agenda too, right?
He was on the agenda, I can probably get his contact information, but anyway, it was interesting hearing his presentation and then talking to him. There's no fees associated with them upfront, but this is what they do, this is what their association does. So I'll get you his information, let you call and talk to him, but I found it very fascinating, and he was willing to come here and present to the commission on how all that stuff works.
Perfect, so I sent, and I will send to this person as well, the background material that I have from Stepto and Johnson from John Stumpf. And that way we can have an engagement letter that has the background information. Then following up on Amplified Sound, do we still have IT here, IT came in here and was fantastic, they set up all of these microphones, they just pulled in while you were away over at four, the last bit, so there's one last little piece that will be installed between now and the next meeting. The next thing that we are working on is trying to get the text of motions, and we're having some issues, we're, we were playing around with it this morning, but that way we can have the text of motions on the screen while you're debating. Closed captioning is a significant additional fee to our webinar service. So I think as we review which webinar service we're going to use going forward, that may be something that we consider. For instance, if we use Google meets, it's free and it will, it's free as part of its program. The other things left meeting, the clock was off and Commissioner Majdi doesn't have his nameplate, so the clock's been fixed, his nameplate's been ordered. If there are other things like that, feel free not to complain publicly and just come to me because I'll, I'll try to get them fixed. The next is boards and employee training, so first, the next training with regard to ethics in the Open Meetings Act is February eighth, it's by Google meets, it's free, it's virtual. We sent it out to our boards, we shared it on the alert system, we've shared it with any department that has oversight of boards and commissions and asked them to attend. As you think about the direction of the commission going forward, this would be a wonderful thing to require for anyone who's been appointed to a board or commission that they take an Open Meetings Act and ethics training, then. Well, we'll, we'll reserve that one. Then with regard to employee training, a lot of our issues with regard to employment and HR issues are the result of not being able, not having appropriate training, so for the first time in a long time, we've scheduled a just an employee ethics training, again, it's free, it's virtual, and there are two sessions, I've, for staff made it mandatory and attendance is going to be taken so that we can find out if anyone was unable to attend, we can follow up as to why.
I'm just wondering if any of the training is available on our website, so a citizen could, so the same information we're hearing and know.
That, we sent it out along the alert system, I can also have it posted on our website, I've also spoken to the executive. So that, we sent it out along the alert system. I can also have it posted on our website. I've also spoken to the executive director of the Ethics Commission. In other states, they've actually, the attorney general's office has partnered with the university in order to make a program that you can take at any point and you can certificate at the end. You're taking tests along the way. And so I've sent them one of the other examples that states have and said, is this something that you could do? Because I would really like to have this shared among our boards and commissions.
Right.
So she's looking into it.
And the public who are watching us and want to understand the standards we have to adhere to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then, let's see here, Homeland Security. So first, we're looking at temporary pay and classification. So Dick Myers, who came in here last meeting, has been in the role of the interim director of the Homeland Security and Emergency Managers, Management Department since November twenty eighth, when the director submitted his leave of absence for medical reasons. And he's been with the department since he, Dick, has been with the department since September twenty twenty one. So under our policies and procedures, two twelve, which is compensation during temporary assignments, it says that on the tenth day of working in that position, that you will receive a pay of the lowest step, which we've done away with steps, at that next grade level or one step above your current salary. So whichever is higher. And for him, that would be the next salary grade. So I, this is late in happening because there hasn't been a county administrator, there hasn't been someone in charge of HR. And I, they told me about it on Tuesday before the agenda was needed to be put together. So I have a suggested motion there, which is to move to select Dick Myers as the interim director of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Department at grade eight at a salary of seventy six thousand, three hundred and sixty one effective February first.
Are you waiting for that motion? I'd be happy to offer that. I move to select Dick Myers as the interim director of the Homeland Security and Emergency Management Department, grade eight, with a salary of seventy six thousand, three hundred and sixty one dollars, effective February first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries five zero.
Well, well deserved for filling that. There's only two people in that department and he's got to be on call twenty four seven.
And there are actually three people.
Three, you're right.
And both, both other positions are currently vacant, as the director position is and his public information officer. So he's doing the job of three people right now.
And could I state for the record that I spoke to Mr. Myers before? Eddie brought this up and he was fine with doing all this in open session because he could have asked for it to be in executive session. Is that correct, Mr. Myers? Okay.
So then the next is he has done the work of three people, like we've talked about before, including some pretty significant work, including completing the MOU with the Customs and Border Patrol, including completing our work with our hazard mitigation plan and spearheading the county through several emergency closures because of snow. So with that said, his tenth day should have been December twelfth. And if he would have been appointed on this, by that tenth day of December twelfth, he would have received an additional one thousand, seven hundred and seventy six, one, one thousand, seven hundred and seventy seven dollars and seventy six cents. So.
That's a tongue twister.
It is. With that, I recommend paying a lump sum payment for the clerical error of not completing that interim, that selection of the interim director for Homeland Security. And this suggested motion is there. I've also included that policy two twelve for you and just so that there is not an appearance of impropriety, that this is a backdoor way of me seeking compensation under policy two twelve. I there, I stated in writing that I'm not seeking any additional compensation beyond my JCPA salary.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the lump sum payment of one thousand, seven hundred and seventy seven dollars and seventy six cents to Dick Myers for the clerical error and compensation for time worked between December twelfth, twenty twenty three and February first, twenty twenty four.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sure. Sorry for the error. I'm glad we could fix it.
I'm actually too busy to even worry about.
All right. A good deal. Awesome. Well, thank you. Thank you, Dick. I know you, you've been carrying a lot of weight over there. I appreciate it. A lot of work and, and you're doing the work with three people. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, motion is approved five zero.
We are blessed to have you for sure. Thank you.
So then on to the opioid settlement plan. The county received in the month of January, one million, one hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and nine dollars and fifty nine cents. I reached out to the bank where that's held and we're currently having in, it's accruing an interest of point seven five percent.
Oh my.
And then if I had, if I had access to my email, computer has died. It's about forty five hundred dollars in the next six months that we'll receive in interest. I assume that we won't be able to allocate those funds within the next six months. So I asked them if they had something, it's called a CDR, when you have a CD at a higher rate than that two hundred and fifty. And I said, what is your current rate? And I want to say it's five point oh three and I'm very sorry. Oh, it's here. Oh, I don't have the rate on now, no. But I do have the amount. Yeah, it was four, forty five hundred over six months. And if we put it into a CDR for six months, then it's twenty nine thousand, five hundred roughly that we would receive, which is pretty significant.
Yeah.
So something to think about if you wanted to put it into a CDR, which to hold it for six months, which I assume that it would take a little bit of time for you to figure out where it's going and then the entity to be ready to receive it. So that's why I, I estimated six months, something to consider. But I also have a suggested motion there and I just threw out a date that they, we could hold a public workshop to understand the opioid crisis. So I assume we'd bring in maybe someone from your office or from the police to discuss what conviction rates are, someone from the health department, both to give a, a quick five, ten minute presentation on the opioid crisis in Jefferson County. And then to also understand from our attorney possibly how the opioid settlement funds can be used. And then also possibly to receive constituent input, but constituents may need some time to digest that information. So it may be a second public workshop.
So I'm just going to say I, I'm not available on the twenty second. So I was just going to propose the twenty seventh or twenty eighth for, for our first, if that works for.
And I want to say that's also the, those are the budget dates.
I think, yeah. Can we push that out of budget? I mean, get it out, like push it out February somewhere.
Can we push the budget out?
No, 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 no.
This one workshop?
Yeah, yes.
Another question to consider, you mentioned citizen input, might get more turnout if it's an evening meeting rather than morning.
Morning too.
You name the time and you can put it on the agenda.
I think we could disseminate. I'm just going back to look for the budget. Because I know we're going to be up against a lot of these.
I would say this like mid, mid March.
Mid March.
Budget, well, we have budget workshops in mid March.
By the twenty eighth, so.
Yeah.
So at the next meeting, we were going to approve the, all of those public meetings for the budget. Should I also add on there suggested date for March to this public?
Yes, please. And evening meeting, right? Is there order to try to target six, like a six P M?
And I do like the idea of putting, putting that money in the CDR until we figure out where it's going to go to.
It's here, Mo. Shit, that's not on here. This was just a setup.
Okay, okay. My, my computer died and the battery died. So.
It's not that you couldn't make, make that, I guess, but.
They don't have a recommended. Oh, okay. Well, I'll move, I'll just go and move a motion then to move our opioid money, which is a total one million, one hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and four dollars.
Nine.
Five hundred and nine, five hundred and nine dollars, fifty nine cents to a CDR, that's what you call a CDR, that to, to to receive better, better interest payment.
Time period.
Time, and the time period would be six months for now.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sure. I think the county administrator outlined the benefits here. Point seven five percent's low. If over five percent's a lot more.
That's a change, yeah.
It's going to make a significant impact on county funds. I think this is financially prudent. I support it.
I agree. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries five zero.
I'm going to just make this one and just leave. I to approve it. I'm directing the county administrator to set up a public workshop on the opioid settlement funds at a date that works in conjunction with our budget schedule and a six P M meeting, an evening meeting.
Second. Second, okay. Pasha's second. I was going to say, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries five zero.
All right, my last one then is just board openings and there are a variety of boards, some that cannot meet because they don't have even enough for a forum. So our typical way of soliciting people to participate in our boards is to list it on our website. And I don't think that that's sufficient to get public engagement. So kind of going on the road. So we'll be off at Rotary. We'll all share with the chamber if there are any other events that you would like. Jessica's putting together one pagers on what the board does, the requirements to be on that board. So let us know and we'd love to present how people can get engaged with the, with the county.
And there are also the legal requirements, which have probably already been made for posting for the first round of appointments, but we haven't gotten anyone to respond. So yeah, I don't know how much the paper could have put it on our Facebook page, county Facebook page.
It's my understanding that they've been shared on Facebook, that they've been shared on our website often. I think it's also been shared on the alert system. And I just meet people where they are.
Right.
Probably another way that we can get more engagement. Yeah.
You're going to advertise on Instagram? Is that what you're saying?
Snapchat.
That'll make a difference.
TikTok.
Okay, serious question. Do we have training requirements and travel requirements that impose costs on our board members? Any of that? I'm just curious if there are requirements for board members, commissioners, like a planning commissioner, do they have training requirements or travel requirements? No?
I don't really think so. I mean, sometimes they may attend some sort of Open Meetings Act or Ethics Seminar.
Usually that's brought here to.
Okay, I was thinking that might be a hindrance if they have to pay for it out of pocket, but it looks like the burden is not very high.
All right.
Thanks.
And that's it for me.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything else that needs to be brought for the commission today? Here and on, if there are no objections, we're adjourned. Thank you.